Um, Mr. Callaway.
Alright, so get out of that and just call.
Alright, we'll go ahead and call a meeting to, uh...
Only need, oh.
Alright, can we mute the outside mics, please? Thank you, IP. Alright, we're gonna call a meeting to order. This is going on, uh, it's a, um, webcast, uh, Zoom. Uh, you're gonna have a process. IP is going, if you want to speak on an item, uh, you need to, uh, raise your hand. You'll find out what item you're, you're doing. If you're in the public and you want to speak on a particular item, you need to have a speaker card filled out because we're being told there's gonna be hundreds of people here, so you need to be able to manage the, uh, the meeting moving on here, so, um...
Is this the comments for the entire agenda?
So...
Or is this closed session? Is it the comments at this time?
So at this time, we're gonna take comments on closed session items. And, uh, did you have some comments, sir? You need to have them asked on when you need to build it. It's not our rule, it's the Health Department's.
I need a roll call.
So, can we do a roll call, please?
Mayor Chair Hafer.
Here.
Mayor Protem, Vice Chair Loa.
Here.
Council Members, Directors, Carillo.
Here.
Bishop. Bettencourt. We have a quorum.
Thank you. I, I didn't... Did you show Bettencourt out?
Oh, no.
She's probably awaiting us in the closed session room.
Oh, okay, so we show her on the table. Alright, so we're gonna go to a closed session, sir. Do you have a comment on closed session items? Yes, yes, sir.
Oh, yes, I wanted to comment on item.
So if it's a closed session, which is, uh, items under number 4.1 through...
14.3.
That public hearing? 14.3 is a public hearing issue.
14?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would, so it is... Yeah?
Well, it's, we, we can't call 14.3 until 7 o'clock.
Okay. But it's, it's all one meeting, it was mine, you're candid.
Yeah, I know, it's just because they agendaize it after 7 o'clock, so if people want to comment on it in advance of doing that, they have to have the option to be heard on it.
If we, if you table it, then there's nothing to be heard of.
I, I have a table at the 7 o'clock. I think it's appropriate, yeah.
I would move the table because I don't know that I'm gonna have a second or go to the conference, so...
Okay.
So you would have a second. I'll, I'll wait for that 7 o'clock meeting.
Okay. Alright, just trying to, just trying to help to talk this one on. We're going to closed session. Chris. How is it that...
All right, where's my, hold on a second.
Where's my agenda?
All right. All right, sorry for getting back in here a little late. We got a lot of issues that we had on the agenda. I'd like to call a meeting back to order. City Attorney, please report out from the matters from closed session, please, sir.
Sheriff, give me just a second here. It's my computer, so I have to start. Okay, all members of the council were present and able to participate in all items. As to item 4.1, council has provided an update on this matter and provided unanimous direction to staff. As to item 4.2, council heard this matter and gave no direction to staff. As to item 4.3, council heard this matter and gave unanimous direction to staff. As to item 4.4, council considered this item and gave unanimous direction to staff. As to item 4.5, 4.6, and 4.7, they will continue to a further date. And item 4.8, council heard this matter and provided unanimous direction to staff. There is no further portable action at this time, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. So we're going to adjourn the closed session meeting. We have the regular meeting. We'll have a pledge of allegiance in a moment in silence of our troops. May you please stand joined with me, please. Ready, begin. Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic of America, to the Constitution, one nation, united by the Constitution and justice for all. Thank you. All right, so we've already conducted roll call at the 5 o'clock session. The, I'm going to skip a couple, I'm going to try to skip around here a little bit so we can get, we have four minutes. We're obligated to stop the meeting and conduct a public hearing pursuant to state law.
Mayor Hoffauer, can you just announce that I was in closed session because I missed roll call?
Oh, yes, uh-huh. Yeah, we included you. They told us that you were on the other side there, so. Yeah, so first of all, let me get a waiver of full reading resolutions and ordinances on the agenda. Do you have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Do you have a motion, second? City Clerk, can we please get that item, please?
Mayor Hoffauer?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Cudillo?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Benton Court?
Yes.
Very good. Okay, I have a request for a modification on the agenda. Mr. Loa?
Yes, on item 4.3, given the opinion of having heard argument and a pending decision on the question of the presidential vaccine mandates, which may have a broader impact than just the presidential power, it may have a much broader scope than that. In the case of Biden versus Missouri, I move to continue this action until a further date.
Okay, I have a motion, do we have a second?
There's a second.
A second. Okay, any further discussion or call for a vote?
Mayor Hoffauer?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Loa?
Yes.
Councilmembers Cudillo?
Yes.
Bishop? Bishop?
Mr. Bishop?
And Benton Court.
Ms. Benton?
I would like to have a vote on it tonight, so I would vote no because I would kind of, I want to move this forward if we can, but, so I'm going to say no.
Did you say you're moving it forward in the meeting, or you're moving it forward to another day?
To another day.
Penny, yeah, Penny, the outcome of the Supreme Court decision has come out.
I'm kind of a thorn in that. I would rather just vote on it. I'm kind of a thorn in that. I would rather just vote on it and get it over with.
Okay, so that's a no? All right, so 3-2. All right, excellent. All right, so can we make sure that public safety staff lets the folks know that item will not be heard this evening? So if we have people in the audience that were looking to speak on that item? All right, so we have, we have to move forward with the, with the item on the, now where does that add on the, on the agenda here, City Clerk?
14.1.
That's the one that's timed certain, right?
Yes.
7:30 timeline. Okay, so we will go to item, I have 7:30 right now in my, we'll go to item 14.1. Public hearing to receive input from the community regarding the redrawing of election district and boundaries. Okay, this is the time for the public to provide any additional input. It's required that we have that, that, no decision's going to be made. It's a time to provide any other additional testimony. I will open a public hearing at this time. City Clerk, do we have any speaker slips on this item? IT, do you have anybody queued up for item 14.1, sir?
Yep, we do.
Okay, so can we go ahead and?
Dave Bowman, please feel free to unmute yourself.
You know, there are a lot of Latino organizations who went ahead and went out of their way to thoroughly study what is going on with the redistricting. They've gone ahead and submitted various very fair maps, and the reality is, no matter where you go, other than the west side, you are going to go ahead and land in a predominantly Latino area, no matter where. So the reality is, is that if any of these maps are gone ahead and refused, there's a very high level of probability that there will be suit filed against the city council. Again, another lawsuit filed against the city council in the city of Palmdale. A lawsuit that will ultimately be paid by the taxpayers of the city council. I can't tell you how disappointed I am that there would even be any kind of an argument in relation to what the district map should look like. And I can't tell you how disappointed I am that the seed would again go ahead and open itself up to lawsuit. That is all.
Thank you, sir.
And who was that?
That was Mr. Dave Bowman. IT?
That is all from the online attendees.
Okay, we're gonna close the online portion of it. City Clerk? Do you have speaker slips on this item?
For item 14.1?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Sandy Corrales?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Sandy Corrales, and I'm a 34-year resident of Palmdale. And while we're talking about districting, I should tell you that I have lived in all four of the council districts in those 34 years at one time or another. I'm before you tonight because I would like to address this issue, which of course now, we know happens every 10 years. Tonight, actually, what you're seeing is an unprecedented coalition, an alliance of several Latino organizations and leaders. You received a letter on January 3rd that was signed by several representatives of Antelope Valley League of United Latin American Citizens, SALVA Coalition for Humane Immigration Rights, the Dolores Huerta Foundation, AV Chapter, Cafe con Leche, Pueblo y Salud, the American Liberty, Civil Liberties Union, ACLU, Tabera Foundation, anyway, helping hands numerous organizations that are coming together to make sure that the representation of our entire community has a voice, has a seat at the table. So we sent the letter recommending the maps provided 203 and 205. But as recently as this week, we have had technical consultants advise us that there's an even greater map version that we are recommending, that you should have received a letter today. Obviously, in those 34 years that I've lived here, I've seen a great change in the demographics of our great city, whether it's ethnicity, political party affiliation, age. I mean, there's so many changes, and they've all been dynamic and for the best. We are here tonight, I am here tonight to make sure that Latino community in particular has fair representation. And I have to tell you, city of Palmdale has put together an excellent packet to describe the options to engage our community. And I think that's why you're seeing such an outpouring. I will end by saying, we are committed to be partners. I want you to also look to the future. I served on the Palmdale School Board for 12 years, and most of our schools here in Palmdale are already 75% Latino student population. So keep that in mind, and I'm happy to always partner with our great city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
City Clerk?
Rosie Manella?
Hi, Rosie.
Good afternoon, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Thank you for the opportunity. So I also, I'm part of this Latino group. I'm running a volunteer organization. We represent the countywide Latino Council for Prevention of Child Abuse. And the council that we represent usually is the Afirm Council, which is representative of all of the kids in the Antelope Valley. And I wanted to find out if you did actually receive our letter.
Well, there's a full stack of stuff up here, but go ahead. Your three minutes is running.
All righty. Well, I don't have a lot to say. I'm just here to say that we should always look at making sure that our maps are equitable, that all people are represented, and that we do things correctly. And always to look to the future to make sure that things are done to represent everyone and everyone's interests, and never be a self-interest person. So the maps that we sent to you that were on time were map 203 and 205. But the one that we sent you recently, it's excellent. It represents everyone, and it's divided so equally that I hope that you will take a look at it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Marcos Alvarez?
Mr. Alvarez?
Good evening, council, mayor, everybody. Thank you for allowing me to speak. And today's compliance with COVID, it looks better than the last time I was here, so thank you for complying with that. Clearly, you're looking out in the interest of our cities, so thank you again. With that said, you know.
Go ahead.
With that said, I'm also part of this new coalition that's moving forward, and I throw out a percentage to you, 62%. That's just the way it is, and that number's gonna get even bigger. What I mean by that, that's Latino population. And historically, they haven't been equitably represented in this community. So as I sit here in front of the leaders that represent Palmdale, Palmdale cares, right? I know you will make the best moves and interest that becomes inclusive for all citizens in this community when it comes to redistricting. With that said, I want to thank the city for its public workshops and the hearings that have encouraged residents to feel educated on redistricting boundaries and local, state, and federal laws, to have districts that represent all our residents, including, as I stated, 62% of the population. So as I sit down and listen to everybody else, Palmdale's changing. And I know everybody here is doing the best they can to include representation, not just on the west side, but for all sides of our ever-growing city. So with that said, thank you for taking the time.
Thank you. Next person? Okay, hold on. Can we make sure that only one set of doors is open at a time out there because it's very disruptive? Thank you.
Jason Zink?
Mr. Zink? On this item, sir?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I think it would have been important to, like, just have the maps up on the wall or something like that. I've always thought that there should be a room added to this chamber where you have screens, digital screens where you could change and inform the people of council members, their districts, and anything that's on the agenda. So I want you guys to think about that. I've always thought that there should be a strong central district and represented by somebody that lives in the central district. Right now, the central district is represented by somebody who lives on the west side. And it's hard for a person to compete with somebody who lives on the west side because a household per capita is over $100,000, where the household per capita in the central part of Palmdale is $50,000. And when you have candidate statements that cost $2,000 to $5,000, and not because we're majority Latino, you're talking $5,000 just to get a paragraph out there in the candidate statement. It's an unfair, uneven playing field. So it's not, it's more than just about districts. It's about creating, but that's the next part. And if you're running for Assembly, Cudillo, that's before you, you know, go to Sacramento, you need to make sure that that happens. You need to finish that part, create an even playing field in Palmdale. So the west side, I just want to make sure that the central part of Palmdale is represented by a central person. And that's it. I have been probably the biggest advocate for the Latino community because I've always wanted a southeast Antelope Valley college campus to inspire higher education, to bring higher household income, so we could have more things in this city. Or if we don't build a campus, we're gonna have to build welfare offices. That's just the fact of life. The higher educated you are, the better off you are, right? So we gotta decide what kind of city we want. Now, as far as.
Let's keep it on the maps, okay?
But the thing is, we need to have representation, but we need people that can fight for the central part. Right now, the central part of Palmdale doesn't have a grocery store. We have all these apartments, all these senior citizens, and there's not one grocery store. I've asked you repeatedly to take the county out of the grocery store, relocate them, relocate those offices across the street or down by the storefront college campus, and put the grocery store back. These people don't have cars. You know what? What do you expect these people to do? You have senior citizens that have to go to Saves and get secondhand food? I mean, we should be so much further ahead than we are. But please do not put the west side connected to the central part.
Time?
City Clerk?
We have Vladimir Gomez?
Mr. Gomez?
Muy buenas noches. That's why you're here most of the time here in Palmdale. Thank you, mayor. Thank you, council, for allowing me to speak. I'm here in favor of maps 3 and 4. You have received already maps 205 and 203. I know there were some technical difficulties, but 3 and 4 are the best for our community. I'm an elected official to a school board, and mostly 80% of our kids are Latino, Hispanics. In the future, 20 years from now, the new census will be coming out every 10 years. We will see. Right now, we're over 60%. Probably will be over 75% in the future. So I know you would like to take consideration to 2 and 3, but 3 and 4 are the best for us. That'll be the best bet for Palmdale. Because mostly where you go, while we had the grocery stores, are by Yalta. The biggest ones are by Yalta, here in Palmdale and Lancaster. So the Latino community is growing, so we gotta work together to make it a better community for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. City Clerk?
Javier Flores?
Mr. Flores? Just give it to the city clerk. The clock is running, sir.
Good evening, mayor and council. Javier Flores, I'm representing ALBA today, Alianza Latina del Valle de Antilope. It's an organization that actually began several years ago when the whole redistricting issue started. And we've revived the organization, and it's coming along very, very well. I'd like to mention what we're here to do today. Essentially tell you, thank you for having accepted our original maps that we submit. Actually, we did create those maps. We submitted them because they were the better of all the maps that you were already in possession of and were already in your webpage. It was numbers 203 and 205. Subsequently, we've had enough time finally to put together two of our own maps with the help of consultants from the Dolores Huerta Foundation and MALDEF, Mexican-American Legal Defense and Education Fund. But the time's lapsed, so you don't have to accept them if you don't want. We're asking you today to please do that. Extend the time, not only for us, but whoever has submitted from the deadline of January 3rd to today at 7:30 in the evening. That's what we're doing here. We submitted map 3 yesterday to the commission, and we're submitting map 4 to you today as a city council. These are good maps. These are the maps that are preference, preferential maps, and we hope you consider them. We hope you include them as a part of the list of maps that you're gonna look at. But if you don't, if you don't, then at least include them as part of the argument for three Latinos, strong Latino voting rights districts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Can we have the, can we have them address the, the public address systems and stuff out there? Because it's very difficult to pay attention, and it's very disrespectful to the speakers. We can't speak to them. And if we need to, we can take a break. So can we please have something, remind them that we're trying to conduct business here? And we got ladies out there getting tickets for blowing their whistles out at a sexually violent predator's house. I'm trying to figure out this. Okay, city clerk?
We have no more speaker slips for that item, but we do have a speaker slip that doesn't have an item on it, so I'm not sure for which item it's for.
All right, well, we'll do that under the general deal.
Okay.
We have one more speaker? I want you to speak.
All right, we already cut that off, but go ahead.
Kristen Parks, feel free to unmute yourself.
Have you got, what's the phone number of the name?
Kristen Parks?
Kristen?
That's our consultant.
Hi, I'm a consultant. I'd like to be promoted to a panelist so I can make my presentation.
That's not the way this works right now. Thank you.
She's our consultant.
Oh, she's a consultant? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
All right. All right, so. IT, can you address that? And so, so we're gonna, now we're gonna have the presentation by the consultant. We'll cut off the public comment on this item. Any motion on that item, please?
Salute.
Okay, second? Okay, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Mr. Bishop?
Yes, all good.
Okay, all right. Okay, so you're gonna, we gotta bring her up there? Okay, so now we're, we're having the presentation by the staff member. Go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council, and everyone in the chamber this evening. I'm going to share my screen. The purpose of my presentation is to review the draft maps that have been submitted by members of the public, as well as by NBC, VR, your consultant team. And we are very proud of the city of Palmdale, that you have had such wonderful public engagement. If you look at our timeline, you'll see that we started the redistricting process.
The mayor is out of the room at the moment. Could we hold on until he returns, please?
We're gonna have to take a break because this is getting out of control out there.
What's going on?
The deputy says this is a, we need to stop. And then we'll take a break.
So what's gonna happen?
We're just gonna take a break, and they're gonna disperse them. All right. Is the consultant done?
No, she, we held her up while you were out.
Okay. All right, go, I'm sorry, go ahead.
All right, y'all. So here's the timeline. We started the redistricting process back in August. Here we are in January at the third public hearing. We held a series of four community workshops, one in each of the current council districts. And then the advisory redistricting commission has also held a number of public meetings to receive input and discuss mapping decisions. They will be scheduling an additional meeting in the coming week or so to come together on a recommended map to recommend formally to the city council prior to the February second hearing. So just so the council is aware, looking ahead, February second is the date that I will be back presenting before you, but primarily listening to you as you go through the map options and identify the map that you wish to move forward with. And then on February sixteenth, staff will have prepared an ordinance so that you can vote to adopt the map. This puts us well ahead of the April seventeenth deadline to adopt the new map for the next ten years. So quickly, just to review the federal and state requirements, because as you look at the draft maps that have been submitted, you wanna make sure that you are keeping in mind these legal requirements. Because it's important for the city of Palmdale to adopt a map that will be legally compliant. So the first federal requirement is that each of the board districts should be equal in population size. And that is within an allowable total deviation of ten percent. So the districts don't have to be exactly equal, but we don't want the difference between the largest district and the smallest district to be greater than ten percent. So we will be looking at deviation numbers. We also want to make sure we comply with the Federal Voting Rights Act, as we heard some of the speakers mention. And we want to make sure that while we are thinking through issues that have to do with voting rights, that we are not drawing any districts based solely on race. We also have a state law, the California Fair Maps Act, that has given us four criteria that must be considered in order of importance. First and foremost, each district must be geographically contiguous, meaning each district must be one whole piece with no disconnected parts. Second, we want to minimize the division of neighborhoods and communities of interest. Third, we want to create easily identifiable boundaries. And fourth, this is the last in importance, so to the extent that we can maintain compactness of our district, insofar as that doesn't violate any of the other criteria, we want to make sure that our districts have a shape that is relatively compact and that we're not drawing lines that bypass a nearby area to go farther away and take in another area, right? So if you have districts that are compact, you have often less strange shapes. Sometimes you do need to have districts that are a strange shape in order to, for instance, comply with the Federal Voting Rights Act. So this is just something to be aware of. So federal and state law are the things we want to keep in mind here. Other things, of course, can be considered, but only as we have made sure that we have evaluated our legal priorities.
Okay. So before we go on to the next slide, we're gonna take a brief break. We'll let the deputies get, take care of business because they have an issue they're trying to get control of here. And we're gonna take a break for about ten minutes. We're gonna clear council chambers, and we'll allow the deputies to clear the, take, take care of what they have to take care of based on their advice to us, okay? So we'll be back in about eight o'clock.
Does that, does this comply? We're still going with a hearing, aren't we?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so the folks that are in the chamber are gonna all come back?
Yes, we're coming back, coming back. We're gonna allow it to, about a ten minute break.
Let our remote participants are online. I thank you for your, uh, thank you for bearing with us there. The, based on the advice of our deputies, they were having a little difficulty and advised us that we needed to give them the opportunity to get control of the situation it was, they were having some difficulty with. So, I appreciate that. And in the interest of the safety of the individuals who are here, we got doors, we can get out. You guys are stuck, so we didn't want to have a problem. So, all right, so can we bring the consultant back on, please?
Hi, thank you for bearing with us. Thank you, ma'am. Of course, I'm going to return to the slide I was on.
Okay.
Just one moment. All right, so we, we talked about the legal requirements, and of course, the first legal requirement through the district map is population balance, right? That each district is relatively equal in population size. It's worth noting that the current districts are population balanced. If the council wished to consider re-adopting the current map, it would meet this one federal requirement, but it would have to be evaluated according to the other legal criteria, especially the California Fair Max Act. So, of course, here's the current district map. It was a court-imposed map that was put in place fairly recently, but you can see here that some of the districts are not necessarily compact. They are contiguous, and we have been hoping to hear from members of the public about what boundaries may best represent their neighborhoods and communities. So, you'll see that we've received a wide array of options that, that provide other options other than the current map. And just a quick reminder that a community of interest is defined as any geographically concentrated population that has common interests and should be included in a single city council district, so that that community has a chance to be represented on council. We did hear from the public that testified about communities of interest in the city of Palmdale. This is certainly not an exhaustive list. We even heard in public comment this evening about the central area of Palmdale versus the west side. So, these are all things that I urge the council to consider, all of the neighborhoods and communities that you're familiar with as you look at these maps. And I, you know, certainly let us know if you see any communities that are divided by district lines that should be preserved intact in a single district. So, as I mentioned, Palmdale did have excellent public participation in this process, certainly compared to many of the other jurisdictions in Los Angeles County and Ventura County. And so, we did receive 11 maps from the public, and as we heard this evening, that last map was submitted just last night, so we have not had time at NBC to process it for you and post it on the website, but it will certainly be available by the next advisory redistricting commission meeting and certainly in time to be considered at the next public hearing. NBC also produced initially a minimal change map that just cleaned up census blocks that changed in 2020. Every 10 years, the census changes its geography and reduced the, the minimal change map also just reduced the total population deviation a little bit. I'm going to show you three more NBC maps this evening.
That our remote participants are online. I thank you for your, uh, thank you for bearing with us there. The, uh, based on the advice of our deputies, they were having a little difficulty and advised us that we needed to give them the opportunity to get control of a situation it was they were having some difficulty with. So I appreciate that. And in the interest of the safety of the individuals who are here, we got doors, we can get out. You guys are stuck, so didn't want to have a problem, so. All right, so can we bring the consultant back on, please? Hi, thank you for bearing with us. Thank you, ma'am.
Of course, I'm going to return to the slide I was on.
Okay.
Just one moment. All right, so we, we talked about the legal requirements, and of course, the first legal requirement through district map is population balance, right? That each district is relatively equal in population size. It's worth noting that the current districts are population balanced. If the council wished to consider re-adopting the current map, it would meet this one federal requirement, but it would have to be evaluated according to the other legal criteria, especially the California Fair Maps Act. So, uh, of course, here's the current district map. It was a court-imposed map that was, um, put in place, uh, fairly recently, but you can see here that some of the districts are not necessarily compact. Uh, they are contiguous, um, and we have been hoping to hear from members of the public about what boundaries may best represent their neighborhoods and communities. So you'll see that we've received a wide array of options, um, that, that are, provide other options other than the current map. And just a quick reminder that a community of interest is defined as any geographically concentrated population that has common interests and should be included in a single city council district, so that that community has a chance to be represented on council. Um, we did hear, uh, from the, the public that testified about communities of interest in the city of Palmdale. This is certainly not an exhaustive list. We even heard, uh, in public comment this evening, um, about the, the central area of Palmdale versus the west side. Um, so these are all things that I urge the council to consider, all of the neighborhoods and communities that you're familiar with as you look at these maps. And I, you know, certainly let us know if you see any communities that are divided, uh, by district lines that should be preserved intact in a single district. So as I mentioned, Palmdale did have excellent public participation in this process, certainly compared to many of the other jurisdictions in Los Angeles County and Ventura County. Uh, and so we did receive, um, 11 maps from the public, and as we heard this evening, that last map was submitted just last night, so we have not had time at NBC to process it for you and post it on the website, but it will certainly be available, um, by the next advisory redistricting commission meeting, and certainly in time to be considered at the next public hearing. Um, NBC also produced initially a minimal change map, um, that just cleaned up census blocks that changed in 2020. Every 10 years, the census changes its geography and reduced the, the minimal change map also just reduced the total population deviation a little bit. I'm going to show you three more NBC maps, uh, this evening, uh, that try to go a little bit farther, uh, to comply with the Fair Maps Act criteria, and I will show you where you can look at each of the public maps a little bit more in depth. So, uh, for council, um, as we're going through this, please think if you see anything that you would like to request, uh, as a change to any of the maps that I show you, uh, so that I can bring it back to you at the next meeting, um, or any other comments or direction you would like to provide. And again, since I know your meeting will be running a little bit long this evening, um, I'm not going to go over all 15 of these maps. The ones that are shown here, uh, in blue have been available online for quite a while. The ones that are listed here in black have been available, um, for at least a week, I believe. Um, there were four maps submitted by members of the public that don't appear to be compliant with the legal requirements. Um, the first three here, 201, 204, and 207 have, uh, do not have balanced populations. They all have total deviation higher than that 10% threshold, um, but they're included here just so you can see some of the ideas. Um, for instance, Public Map 207, uh, intended to draw a district all the way around Plant 42, so you see that trying to sort of go all the way around there. Um, and then Public Map 210, uh, is not contiguous, and you can see that by looking at, um, Districts 1 and, and Districts 3, you can see the colored areas aren't all connected, so that violates, that would violate the California Fair Maps Act. So these maps, um, as your consultant, I would not recommend to move forward, um, because of those reasons, however, still presenting them to you to see if there are any concepts, uh, that you wish to take from these maps and incorporate into others. So, um, first, the NBC orange map, um, this map has a total population deviation of 1.12%, so significantly less deviation and more balanced than the current map. Um, on these maps that I'm showing you, the current boundaries are shown in the black dotted line, and then the proposed boundaries are shown as shaded colored areas. So what you see here, um, is a little bit of shifting, but primarily making District 1 more compact, um, and really removing that, that southern portion of, of District 1 and moving that into District 3. So that's the main thing that we have here. I've also included the election cycle information. As we know, this November, Districts 3 and 4 are up for election, um, and this map would preserve the current election cycle. Um, certainly some voters would move, um, but the election numbers and districts and council members remain the same. That's also the case with the NBC pink map, which is the second map that I'm, uh, presenting this evening. Uh, this map has a slightly higher total population deviation, but it's still quite low at 2.83%, and you see that there's just a different, uh, shifting. It's very similar to the orange map, um, but it's just a different configuration of the, uh, District 1 here. Um, and it's important to point out that the current boundary that you see, that black dotted line, in between Districts 1 and 2, that current boundary, um, has, reflects census block geography that has changed. So to some extent, what I, what we're doing here with the boundary between District 2 and 1 is really updating the boundary to reflect the current geography of the Census Bureau, right? And not only does the Census Bureau count everyone every 10 years, they draw what they call blocks, which are the smallest geographic unit at which that census data is, uh, collected. And so that's part of why we're seeing that change between 1 and 2 is to align with this, better align with the census blocks. Um, and finally, this is the spurned map NBC has created, so that there's different options here. Um, this is the NBC purple map, and again, a slightly higher total population deviation at 3.4%. Um, and again, this map is attempting to make District 1 more compact, uh, add that lower part of current District 1 into District 3, and it, it takes sort of a different approach to smoothing out that geography between Districts 1 and 2. Um, the one thing to point out about this map is this map, the election cycle would remain the same, but this flip-flops the council members, so the council member that currently lives in and represents District 1 in this map would be in District 2 and vice versa. So I just want to point that out. And again, in the other two maps, that's unchanged. So, um, I'm going to navigate to the website now just to show you where you can review all of the other public maps, and then I'm happy to take any questions that you have or direction that you have for me to come back with revisions to any of these maps or new maps that meet specific goals you have. So on drawpalmdale.org, if you scroll all the way to the bottom, there is an interactive review map, and this interactive review map has each of the draft maps available as a layer, and you can compare that to the current geography. Um, and you can zoom in and out, you can turn on satellite view if you want to, uh, whatever you want to do, but all of the maps are here. And you can see, very similar to what you saw in my slides, the shaded area representing the proposed district, and then the thick and black lines representing the current district. So this is a very useful tool, and again, the draft maps are also available here as PDFs with demographic analyses. There is demographic information available for each of these maps, except the ones that have been identified as not population balanced or not contiguous. So everything else has a complete demographic analysis available with it. You'll see this as a PDF, and I just want to point out, the first page of the map, the second page, will show you, uh, how many people in each district and what the demographics for each of the proposed districts are. Um, the last thing that I want to share with you, um, before I hand it over for questions, is that each of these 15 maps that we have received do create three Latino-majority districts, uh, when you are calculating that by citizen voting age population. So, um, I know we've heard from members of the public that that's important, um, however, since every map does that, that's not necessarily going to help you make a decision between them. So, uh, hopefully, that is useful information to you, and I'll take any questions.
Thank you very much. I think that, uh, being that we've only literally had these, you guys have had these things for weeks and months, uh, and we've literally only had these for a couple of hours, in some, some cases, just a couple of minutes on some of these maps, uh, that, uh, we got, we got our homework cut out for us. Uh, Mr. Loa, do you have any questions?
I do. Um, so ultimately, the decision is to the council, and we could come up with a different map than all of these 15 maps.
That is correct.
Thank you. No more, no other questions.
Okay. Ms. Benkort, questions?
I'm going to have to review all of these in detail.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty overwhelming, isn't it? Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Bishop?
Uh, nothing at this time. I'd just like to thank the community and all the groups involved that took the time to help us draw these maps. I know they have, uh, considerable amount of time and effort into it, and I really appreciate that.
Excellent. Yep, I, I think we all could, um, join you with that. Mr. Creo?
I do have two questions. A couple of members of the public brought up the fact that they submitted maps that were, uh, late. Are we accepting those maps, um, for consideration?
Yes, absolutely. So the reason that we had given the public a submission deadline was so that we could ensure that their maps would be processed and available, uh, online in advance of these public hearings. However, technically, we will accept the maps, uh, all the way throughout this process. It's just a matter of making sure that those maps, we receive those maps in time to present them to you. So the map that was received last night will be available for you prior to the next hearing.
The other, I'm sorry, a couple more questions?
No, I just, just follow up on that. So, so the people can continue to submit maps all along now, right? So there's no, no real deadline?
Yes, though, I would recommend to members of the public that now is, is a much better time to review the maps that have been submitted and, and come forward with feedback on the draft maps, right? Because if too much more time elapses when someone's submitting a new map, there really won't be time to process it and present it to council. We can accept it, but you won't have time to review it.
Thank you.
So, yes, just, the public should provide feedback, and the map we received yesterday will be processed and posted publicly.
Thank you.
During your presentation, I thought I heard you say that there was going to be only one map recommended to the council for, uh, consideration, but Mr. Loa is just going to confirm that it could be more than one map since the council could also...
Fifteen of them right now.
Uh, so yeah, but again, that's, that's what I heard. I thought I heard.
So the council will, of course, adopt one map for the next 10 years. The advisory redistricting commission, uh, can recommend anywhere from, you know, 0 to 15 maps to you. So hopefully, the commission will form a recommendation of, you know, one or two maps. But they, they do have the ability to recommend whichever.
That was my point, that, that it's, we're not going to be looking at just the recommendation of one map, but potentially two or three or whatever the case may be.
Correct.
The other thing during the presentation, um, I believe that you also said that, um, the current district maps could also be adopted, but that then there would be an additional process that had to be reviewed through a different board. Is that correct? Can you please elaborate on that?
Yeah, there's not a different process. Um, when we see the current district, uh, numbers not being balanced, then we recommend that our clients, you know, you can't keep your current districts, you have to consider new boundaries. In the case of Palmdale, if you did wish to consider the current boundaries, they could be considered side by side with all of the other maps, and you could vote to re-adopt them if you feel that they adequately comply with the California Fair Maps Act. And I would caution, um, a little bit in, in that area, um, because we have not seen any, California Fair Maps Act is so new, that there haven't been any lawsuits under that law yet, so we just want to be very mindful of the criteria, um, particularly that fourth criterion of compactness. Um, when we look at the current map, um, the districts are not all necessarily very compact. You notice that, that's why I emphasize, uh, in the NBC maps, that we attempted to make District 1 more compact to follow the Fair Maps Act, which is a new law.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I want to acknowledge another comment by another, uh, member of the public that spoke about the central district, the central part of Palmdale. I think that it's worth, uh, noting that there may be some, some, uh, ways that we, you know, the public could consider that, given the fact that, yeah, the cent, central Palmdale may be its unique, uh, district because of all the multifamily apartments, uh, all of the different, uh, characteristics that are unique to Palmdale, besides the fact that it's the downtown of Palmdale where Palmdale started to grow up. Um, so maybe that's, again, I just wanted to acknowledge that, that comment. Um, and maybe that could also be its own unique district if it meets all the criteria. I'm not saying or suggesting that it should be a, a district just because of the comments, uh, provided, but, uh, maybe worth looking into it. And I'm, I'm just mentioning that again, if anybody of the public wants to look at that and propose it as, uh, its own, uh, district. Um, again, just making sure that it meets all the different criteria. And maybe why not, uh, maybe looking at five districts? Uh, that's something that I mentioned from the very beginning of this process. I recognize that it may be a different process, a different way to look at it. Uh, it may involve looking at the city charter and the, uh, lawsuit in 2016. Don't know what the, uh, agreement was, uh, but maybe something that some people may be interested in, and this may be the right time. The other thing, and lastly, I believe that in your schedule, it, you said mid-February would be when this map could be adopted, but the deadline is April, uh, so there's some time. I think that, uh, we would be rushing to get this adopted by February 18 or whatever the date was, when the deadline is April. I have listened to what the speakers have said, and I do believe that, um, we may be rushing it to adopt this by February 18, when we potentially could have two additional months. Uh, those are my comments. Thanks for all the people that have attended the workshops, uh, and the committee. The committee's hard work and dedication to make this a process where it's transparent, and I know that it's hard to, uh, get people to participate. I say that because I attended one or two meetings just to introduce myself and thank the, the, the committee, and I just didn't see a lot of, uh, public participation. Uh, another reason why February 18 or whatever day that was, maybe a little too soon. I don't know what the rest of the council thinks about my comments, but, um, and I'll just end at that, and thank you for the presentation.
I think we have to, uh, get a chance to look at these, uh, at these maps and the impacts that they're going to have on the community and, uh, on ourselves, um, and perhaps, uh, extending the time as appropriate, because it's a lot of maps. We can come up with our own map. We're going to get a recommendation from the committee, so it's, it's quite a bit of work.
The committee have another meeting coming up?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
So with, I know that these, these districts had to, had to be divided up by population, but what about businesses? Some of these districts have all the businesses, while other districts, like mine, have almost none? So I wondered if that was taken into account when, um, when the people were designing these district boundaries?
Yeah, it's a great question. I, I can't speak for members of, of the public, um, but I will say that, that businesses are not identified as such in the legal criteria that we have to follow. However, while we're focusing on residents, on, on the population, um, we can think about populations that have shared economic interests, so maybe being employed by the same employer or having similar socioeconomic, uh, status, or even living, uh, around certain types of industrial or, um, more, uh, business districts or commercial districts, those can all be thought of as communities of interest. However, we would really rely on public testimony in order to take those into account into maps. Um, sometimes I give the example of the city of Pasadena. The city of Pasadena has historically, uh, had each of their city council districts have a portion of Colorado Boulevard of their main, uh, commercial strip. So that is completely legal and permissible once you've complied with the other requirements.
Yeah, I see, the, the only place where that becomes problematic is you've either got 10th Street West, Palmdale Boulevard, or 47th, and there's a whole lot more coming down very soon on 47th, is that sewer gets extended down there. So I, I, I don't know how you end up doing it. Pasadena's been built out for decades, so, uh, I can see where that would work there, but with the dynamics and, uh, with a lot of the changes that are going on right now, uh, I, I, I think that's, I think that you gotta, um, that, that's going to be difficult to try to, uh, you know, it's like trying to divide, uh, districts up...
It's, it's hard, like, in my district, it's almost all residential, so, you know, a lot of people, other council people have opportunity to recruit the businesses to donate for activities within their districts, but if you have no businesses to go out and recruit for donations to, you know, to sponsor events, that makes it very troublesome for the, the council person in that district, because, you know, we, we can't just ask the city for a bunch of money to do an event, um, when, when the other people are asking, you know, the, the businesses. Does that make sense? So there's, there's advantages to having a, an equitable amount of businesses in each district, because it brings value and events, um, and actually a quality of living to each of the districts. So I just wanted to know where you guys stood on, on that topic, and, and, and like I said, how the batteries were designed. Thank you.
Now, I don't think we have a no, no, there's a, there's not a no poaching rule, so feel free. So, okay.
I wanted to join, uh, Councilmember Bishop. Uh, I think it's great to, to have the, um, community coming out tonight. Um, in these times of, um, you know, with the pandemic and economic issues that are going on and, uh, all the things that are affecting us as far as a community is concerned, uh, it's important that the people come out and speak, especially when you come out in person and speak, because we get to see you, you get to see us, eye to eye. And, uh, so I want to join all the council members, but particularly since Mr. Bishop brought it up first, to thank you for coming in, as well as the people that are... as well as the people that are online. So appreciate your continuing interest in this topic, which is very important.
All right, all right, with that.
Thank you, Ms. Parks.
What's that?
Thank you, Ms. Parks.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so with that, we will close the public hearing on that item without objection. Hearing done, so ruled. So 14.1 is a public comment, and on that item is now closed. Okay, and we need to get, we need to get into the business at hand here. You guys want to, you guys want to do on some of these other proclamations here?
If you want to.
Huh?
I believe that she's asking, she was asked during the public comment.
We're not there yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm asking who want to do on eight. I'm asking you guys if there's any consensus on eight. We have a, we have a firefighter cancer awareness month.
Other folks here.
There is a cervical cancer awareness month, National Blood Donor Month.
Other recipients here.
And the Martin Luther King Day. Now, that, that's coming up. We have an event coming up on that, I think, next week. We have, with the National Blood Donor Month, we're scheduling a, an event with the Red Cross on that. How you guys want to handle the others?
Do we have, do we have the recipients of these?
The certificates are here, but the individuals are not.
The, the recipients are online.
Okay.
Okay, so how do we want to do that?
And we also, 8.1 is the Warrior Award for the city of Palmdale.
Oh, yeah, you can handle that one?
I would turn that over to Carrie Smith, our Director of Parks and Recreation, to present on if you.
Okay. 8.1.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you, Rhonda. Thank you for being here. And Becky, are you joining us? And her husband, Paul, nice to see you both. It's my pleasure to recognize Becky's efforts this evening. If you don't mind, I'd like to read the nomination. Becky began working for our Special Events Division fresh out of college, which was just a few months ago, right, Becky? In 2001, Becky hosted a wide variety of city events throughout her career, a rodeo on soccer field, ice skating rink in the mall parking lot, a nationally recognized cycling event, the Pasadena Rose Parade float, and a fairy garden complete with a fire-breathing dragon. Becky has done an outstanding job of bringing community to life, fostering moments that bring residents together and create lifelong memories for families. In May of 2020, Becky accepted a new challenge of overseeing our Community Events Division. Various community groups have eagerly begun to dabble in the event business. Becky's new role was to help guide them to their vision success, utilizing the city's parks and tips of the trade that we refine. Becky has worked with numerous community events and frequently is complimented by her dedication and hard work. Some of the words that our, our community partners use to describe her is determined, skilled, supportive, always willing to help, goes above and beyond her duty, and a great asset to your organization. In summer of 2001, we had yet another challenge as we tried to restart our community events and our city events that were canceled due to COVID-19, and operate them under new restrictions. Becky thoughtfully instructed staff who were newly assigned to her, work her events. She created new processes and procedures to improve efficiency. Becky worked countless hours, and I'm sure in her sleep, and carried a two, two-inch-thick binder of notes everywhere she went. She carried so many organization tools with her, she literally walked around with a basket. I called it her Yogi Bear basket. Becky didn't miss a single critical detail or deadline for our four summer concerts, Kaleidoscope and Grace Fest. Our summer concerts hosted thousands of smiling faces. Kaleidoscope saw a record attendance, and Grace Fest stole out before the event even opened. To say Becky deserves this Warrior Award is an understatement. She has deservedly earned the respect and admiration of her work family. Becky has stepped up and gone above and beyond, and has truly made an impact on her community. So I'm very proud of her efforts and her dedication, and thrilled to be able to give her this nomination today. And I don't know if you want to say a few words, Becky?
Thank you. It's a great honor to be nominated for this. And it's a great honor to be able to put on events and help our community partners and all the residents of Palmdale and put on the great events that we do. I couldn't have done it without the support of everyone and our team and our Parks and Recreation family and everyone that, you know, offers a hand to help and is, and assistance to it. So thank you very much. It's, it's a great honor.
I'm sure Mr. Becky is involved in that too, right?
Little bit.
Well, excellent. So we, we're all going to expect to see a, a picture posted with you wearing the helmet.
Yeah, we're, she's not going to get it, wearing the helmet, that's for sure.
Can't slide by on that. Excellent. Well, thank you, Becky. We thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you and your, and your husband for all your hard work here at the city.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
It'll be waiting for you on your desk in the morning, Becky.
That's right. Want to see a picture? All right, all right, so I guess we're going through these, I'll try to move this along. Chief Stuckey, are you online?
Yes, sir, I'm on. Good evening.
So we have, we have this, the firefighter cancer awareness month. I know you and I both have family and friends that have been afflicted. It sneaks up on you, and we've lost colleagues. And if you, I'm not going to go through all the whereas's, but if you'd like to speak briefly on the, on the issue of awareness for firefighter cancer and telling these guys to clean their damn turnouts, huh?
I would agree with that. I was, I was looking at some stuff today, and between 2015 and 2020, 75% of the firefighter names that go on the memorial annually were resulted in cancer-related illnesses. And as you said, it's, it's typically dirty turnouts, the carcinogens we take in, and, and the diesel exhaust, which is drastically improved. So this, this cancer awareness month, you know, raises awareness, prevention, helps focus on treatment. So on behalf of Division Five in LA County Fire, I certainly appreciate that. And I would, I would close with, last week on January 6, we lost a firefighter during an active firefight. 20-year veteran of our department, John Flagler. He left behind a wife and a 13 and a 15-year-old son. So keep them your thoughts and prayers, and I appreciate the acknowledgement of the proclamation. Respectfully, did a mayor and city council in City Palmdale.
Can we make a point that we're going to close the meeting this evening? In firefighter flaggers' memory, please. Send the appropriate documentation to the department and the family on that matter. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Chief, I'll stop by. You on tomorrow?
Yes, sir, I'll be there.
Okay, I'll stop by. I'll drop that off for you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. All right, so the next one is cervical cancer awareness. And that's another one that sneaks up on you, and often you don't know until it's bad. Maybe Laura might, can you address this? And then we're going to go to our, the other party that's here today. Laura, did you want to say something on that item? Okay, Ryan?
Yes, good evening. I'm Ryan Moon, Chief Operating Officer at Palmdale Regional Medical Center.
All right, so Ryan, you want to tell us the importance of cancer screening? And, and perhaps in some cases, the ability to prevent this disease?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. I mean, with, with all cancer, I mean, early detection's key. So, you know, screening awareness, health prevention, promotion. I mean, that's, that's the best thing for the community. So we're, we're proud to raise that awareness anytime we can with, with all cancers. But cervical cancer, especially, in focus for us this month. So just like to get the word out and the awareness, make sure we have a healthy, healthy community and a lot easier to treat, a lot more survivable if you detect it early. So screenings are key.
Okay, very good. Well, when I'm out on my rounds, I will drop this one off up there at the hospital for you guys tomorrow as well.
All righty, thank you. I really appreciate it.
Get that, get that information, get it out in the lobby there, and let people be aware of this thing, huh?
That's right. Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for bearing with us this evening.
Oh, you're welcome.
All right, do we have our, let's see, Elise Levine or Amanda Marita from, on the Red Cross item?
I am here.
Excellent. So this is National Blood Donor Month. I know you guys are having a serious shortage right now. You guys shanghaied us when we were up doing a CPR class a couple of weeks ago up at the hospital and got a few more pints out of us there. Every 56 days, you can give some blood. And it's really important right now, and I know there's some shortages right now. Perhaps you can speak how the community can help with this.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. My name is Elise Levine, and I'm the Executive Director for the Northern Valleys Chapter of the American Red Cross. My territory covers the San Fernando, Santa Clarita, and Antelope Valleys. And I joined the Red Cross in July of 2021 after being a board member. I want to thank the mayor and the city council for this proclamation. We're honored to be recognized for the work we do to provide over 40% of the nation's blood supply. However, as you may have seen on the news yesterday and today, for the first time ever, the American Red Cross has deemed that blood reserves are at a crisis level. If you're already a donor, thank you. Special thanks go to Mayor Hoffbauer and his wife, who donate regularly. And I'm looking forward to meeting you in the coming weeks once I get over COVID. If you have not donated, though, please do consider. You can go to www.redcrossblood.org to find a location near you. I look forward to working closely with the mayor, the city council, and the people of the city of Palmdale in the future. I'm your go-to person for all things Red Cross, not just blood. So thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much, and I'm looking forward to getting together. I know we're throwing back some emails and to put something together here to help, help even, even further promote that. Because I'll tell you what, you bring in somebody who's been crunched in an incident or somebody that is, because of medical problems, needs that, that blood. There's no substitute for blood, period. So we'll, we're going to get together.
Hey, Mayor Hoffbauer?
Yes. Who's that?
I just have a question. Are we going to have a link that the residents can go to to ask questions? Because like me, I, I used to give blood, and then for obvious reasons, I stopped. And I guess even I have questions about whether I could be a donor or not. I, I would guess people don't want my blood. So if there's a link that we can get to, so we can find out who can donate and who cares?
That's excellent.
That would be really helpful.
That's excellent.
If you go to www.redcrossblood.org, you can answer some screening questions once you find a location. And then you're also going to be doubly screened when you come on site just to make sure that your hemoglobin's okay and that there's nothing else going on. But anybody is free to reach out to me. It's elise.lavine@redcross.org, and I'm happy to answer any questions as well.
That, that's, that was an outstanding question, Laura, because I know for years, because of some on-the-job exposures and treatments I had to get for those exposures, I was precluded from donating blood. And I was at a blood donor event, and they said, oh, no, you're fine now. Come on in. And next thing I know, I had a needle in my arm, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great. So that's elise.lavine@redcross.org, I believe she said, right? And you have the Red Cross link there. So then we also have, we should have Mr. Callaway and Mr. Patterson on Martin Luther King Day, which is January 17. Do we have them, City Clerk? So we have similar proclamations in recognizing the civil rights movement and the work of, and the legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King. Would you like to address that for the, for the listeners out there, sir?
Yes, sir. Thank you for giving the award to us, I mean, the proclamation, presenting it today. I really appreciate it. I really appreciate that the city is putting on the event on Monday to talk about the, the work of Martin Luther King, which is civic engagement. And I wanted to make sure that, you know, the, that we, we kind of try our best to focus on the civic engagement part, come to the city council meeting, doing the things that people are doing, participating in the map drawing, and all the other ways, registering to vote and actually voting, and, and move the actual picking up trash and stuff on Earth Day, and try to make sure that we do what Martin Luther King was actually doing, which is getting out in the streets and, and demanding equity and equality for everyone.
Very good. Thank you, sir. And we will bring these to the, we can either drop it off over at the chamber office when it's convenient over there, or bring it over to the, for the, the program over at the, at the playhouse, okay?
Thank you, sir.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for being on with us today. All righty, that takes care of that. Thank you very much, everybody. Does, is Jesse online for the, for, with the animal control today?
Mayor, it's Carrie. That's going to be me.
Okay, you're on.
Let me get to my screen. Can you see my screen there?
Yep, we got it.
All right. Okay, so we have for you today, Ally, who is a three-year-old female pit bull mix. Ally is described as very dainty, caring, soft, and she loves to sit in your lap. We know bully breeds are very loyal, and they do tend to be lap dogs. So she is available for adoption, preferably to a family that has middle-school-aged children and if other animals are those animals, we call them animals. And I think this is a new one for us, our first time introducing a, an other at animal care refers to them. But this is Buttercup. She is a one-year-old female guinea pig, if you couldn't quite tell. She is available for adoption right now. She came to the shelter as a transfer, and they say Buttercup matches her name perfectly by being the sweetest thing you will ever meet. So if anybody is interested, the adoption fee for Buttercup is, is $10. And then the adoption fee for Ally, that will vary depending on spay, neuter, and that type of thing. But both are available for viewing and to meet them at the Palmdale Animal Care Center. And they can go online and set up an appointment to be able to meet them. Any, if you want to meet any animals that are at the Palmdale or any of the other animal care centers, all of that needs to be done through appointments at this time.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Carrie. And I hope my granddaughter isn't watching that right now with the guinea pig. Otherwise, I'll see you in the morning, so.
Oh, she is so cute. Look at that. Come on.
I know. So if you look at, if you're thinking that you might want a, a pet, they, this is, this is the resource for it. And Carrie always has a goodie bag for anybody that adopts a pet over there. And she's always got a, a goodie bag that is appreciated by the adopters, so. Okay, thank you. Okay, so now's the time for public participation, for people who want to speak to the city council on matters listed or not listed on the agenda within the jurisdiction of the city council. If you're having, if you're attending this meeting by phone or by Zoom, do the appropriate, raise your hand on your personal computer. And if you're here, we'll have the public comment cards that are here. IT, do you have a list for us? So we'll get a screenshot on that. And City Clerk has got her list, so unless we have anything more right now, we are going to go ahead and cut off the public comment. So what have you got there, IT? How many?
None at this moment, actually.
Okay, so you have no, no raised hands now, right? Okay, they gave up? I'm sorry. We're talking to IT. Thank you.
Well, we have one now.
One? Okay, so we'll take that one. And, and City Clerk, how many cards have you got?
So Mayor, I have about 30, about 33 cards.
Okay, so we'll go with one minute with each speaker during the public comment period here. So we can get through this, because we have a lot of critical business to get through. IT, we'll go ahead and take your speaker first. Can you bring him online, please, sir? And then the City Clerk will call each person that they have the card in.
Dave Bowman, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Mr. Bowman? Mr. Bowman, last call, going once?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Well, I'm having to go ahead and abbreviate my comment because I was expecting three minutes, and council has already gone ahead and abbreviated that time down to one minute, which I believe is really unfair. which I believe is really unfair, that you can unilaterally make that decision to go ahead and cut commentary time. But this comment has to do with the evaluation of J.J. Murphy. Now, the U.S. Constitution and Sixth Amendment goes ahead and guarantees that every man is innocent until proven guilty. Yet, the city council, led by Hoffbauer, is going ahead, they've decided, they've decided to become judge and jury in this matter, rather than going ahead and leaving it to the courts. It is my opinion, and I bet you if I spoke it to others, it would be of the same opinion, that this issue should be decided by the court, so every fraction of what went ahead and happened is known to we, the people, because there is more going on here with J.J. Murphy and the settlement that is won by a claimant, and I guess it was fourteen-two. So I think that we should go ahead and actually let this thing go to court, and let's hear what the truth really is.
Thank you. It's not the way it works. Okay, City Clerk, please call individual speakers, please. And we let, Mike, we need to make sure we monitor our numbers in here, because I don't want to get dinged by the authorities on this.
Mayor and council, we have a speaker for four point two, Tanya Alina Schofield.
I'm sorry, which number?
Four point two.
Oh, from the earlier meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So you know, city manager and city attorney all get annual evaluations, just like every other employee. So, they're part of that. So, okay, but go ahead.
Well, we usually have three minutes, but good evening, mayor and city council staff and residents of the city of Palmdale. I am present this evening to request the call or action by our city council and by the people of Palmdale to hold our city leadership accountable. So I'm going to be Harriet Tubman, Sojourner's Truth, Ida B. Wells' truth, Mary McCloud-Bethune, Fannie Lou Hamer, Rosa Parks, Shirley Chisholm, and First Lady Michelle Obama, all wrapped up in one tonight. This city is notably changing demographically on a tremendous scale. About seventy-five to eighty-one percent of the city now represents people of color or non-whites. However, their leadership does not reflect this fact. Moreover, this city, the city of Palmdale, has been cited for racial discrimination through the course of law, and I'm very concerned about the current leadership of the city that I reside in. It has history of prejudice towards women and leadership of color.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, please. Thank you.
Steve Pierce.
Steve Pierce? Steve Pierce going once? Steve Pierce going twice? Steve Pierce, last call. Next speaker, please. We're not, we're not gonna cycle back either. Go ahead.
Jason Zink.
Mr. Zink.
Ten and twelve point six.
Welcome, sir.
I don't think you can go down to one minute. I came here to speak three minutes. So I want to, I want to ask the attorney if this is legal. It is? I don't think it's, well, I don't think it's it's right. I'd like you to pull twelve point six, talk about you guys selling the excess water AVEG. I want that water for the city of Palmdale, for to build lake parks in Palmdale, to make Palmdale beautiful, and also charge the ground table. Martin Luther King, I've asked this city repeatedly for years and years and years to rename Desert Sands Park after Martin Luther King. The name Desert Sands Park doesn't mean nothing to nobody. Martin Luther King, that means something. It's the heart of this city, that park, besides Corson Park, and I think you guys should consider that. And also, the courthouse, Fourth Street, renaming that after Martin Luther King. Also, the rec center. I'm against that until we build a homeless shelter, so people can take showers
Thank you, sir.
and get help. And
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you, sir. We've got business. We have, we have quite a bit of business, and we have a clock that we run against here that has to, things have to be accomplished within. Next speaker, please.
Hilton Welch.
Hilton Welch?
Or Kirsten Welch.
Kirsten Welch? Kirsten Welch, something like that, going once? Welsh going twice? Welsh going three times. Okay, thank you.
Rich Diego.
Rick? Rick Diego.
Betsy.
Last call. Rick Diego, okay?
Betsy Haslett.
Betsy?
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm a graduate of the Palmdale Partners Academy.
Thank you for doing that.
Yes, and it says here we had a discussion about we are not understanding correctly charter cities. From Palmdale Partner Academy, charter cities have more freedom to innovate and pass ordinances according to local laws. In in the preamble, in the event of any conflict between the provisions of this chapter and the provisions of the general laws of the state of California, the provisions of this charter shall control. The link between cities and counties is further strengthened by a constitutional provision permitting the legislator to require counties to perform specified services at the request of the cities within them. And then the city of Palmdale, Article Nine Interpretation Page and the preamble from two thousand nine November third, twice it says, "The fiscal independence economic of our local government will be, utter, serve, and promote the health, safety, and welfare of all the citizens of the city. We do hereby exercise the express right granted by the Constitution of the state of California to enact and adopt this charter for the city of Palmdale."
That's it.
And there's two people that are on this.
That's it, that's it, that's it, Betsy.
Your signature is on here.
But we can talk about that a little more, because there's some provisions within that that are kind of subtle here, but
Okay, well, I took this, this is what the city is promoting.
Yes, exactly.
The city is promoting this.
Next speaker, please.
And how they are conflicting, well, from what they said, that I was applying the city of Palmdale.
Tyler Gavillas.
Tyler? 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 Okay, last call, Tyler? Okay, next speaker.
Catherine Tucker.
Tucker, Catherine Tucker? Catherine Tucker? Catherine Tucker? Last call. Okay, next speaker.
Mario Presence.
Mario, are you here?
You'd probably save a lot of time if you don't go through all the names, because most
Well, we gotta go through them, because I turned the listing and take it back. Next speaker?
Armando Palmer.
Armando Palmer?
Is that Amanda?
Amanda, maybe Amanda Palmer?
Amanda Palmer.
There we go. We gotta have a process here. We're taking them in the order that they got them. Thank you very much, sir. Thank you, go ahead. Okay, thank you, sir. Appreciate that, ma'am. Go ahead. Yeah.
Hello, council members, and court bishops, I'm Lila. Hello, Mayor Hoffbauer. Thank you for honoring my right to speak tonight. My name is Amanda Palmer, and I am from District Two. I am here to ask you to pass ordinance fifteen seventy-seven and to respond to the staff report on fifteen seventy-seven. And the staff report, the city manager presented rebuttals on each section of the ordinance describing the effects of the ordinance, but only the negative fiscal impact on the city budget was described. The ordinance would have many positive impacts on our municipality socially, economically, and other related effects of the ordinance. Allow me to describe a possible possible positive economic impact the ordinance would have on our city. In the Palmdale Magazine for Winter Spring twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, it stated that we got an award for being the most business-friendly city in our county, the Eddie Award, along with five other cities. It sounds like a nice award to get, but let's make sure we actually happen, allow that to happen on paper and segregation today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker?
Yvette Reyes.
Yvette Reyes? We have Yvette Reyes here? Last call, Yvette Reyes, next?
Yeah, she's coming, she's coming.
Oh, is there Yvette? Oh, okay. Wait, if we call you out, wave so we know that's you.
Well, she was waving.
I'm, I just hear. Hi.
Hi, council members. Hello, Mayor Hoffbauer. Thank you for honoring my right to speak tonight. My name is Yvette Reyes, and I want to continue to describe the positive fiscal impact on your city. I am a stakeholder in this city, as are my parents, siblings, and friends who cannot be here, and understand this to be a municipal affair. If you pass ordinance fifteen seventy-seven, which, yeah, and ban vaccine passports in Palmdale, it'd be great for business. Those businesses who are unwilling to enact oppressive mandates on their patrons will find Palmdale to be a safe haven. More businesses will choose to come here and making it one of the best places to live in all of Ollie County. In the Los Angeles Times, they reported that since June, about six thousand employees have lost their jobs or have been shifted into new ones, often at lower pay, at LAUSD alone due to vaccine mandates. If they heard that Palmdale was a safe haven for all, those who did not want to leave the state will have a place of refuge, Palmdale. We will have skilled workers coming to us. And thank you.
Thank you very much. See, it can be done.
We have Lori Carr.
Lori Carr? No? So, next speaker, please.
Looks like Sierra McGalyard.
Sierra McGalyards, or something like that? Sierra? No? Okay.
The next one? This actually looks like Seventy Savida Boyd.
Somebody with something similar to that? Okay.
Mackenzie Martinez.
Mackenzie Martinez, are you here? Mackenzie? Okay.
Art Bellion.
Art Belliard? Okay.
Jackie Rodriguez.
Jackie Rodriguez? Okay.
Mickey Martinez.
Mickey Martinez? No? Okay.
Abraham Sosidum.
Abraham, you here? Great, come on in. Lori, help us with that, because we, I mean, we don't know who is here, who isn't, okay? Thanks.
All right. I I come before you guys. I know you guys pulled the ordinance from being taken up for a vote. And I know you guys may have felt threatened at one point or another, based on the comment that I heard out there. Just know that us for standing up for freedom, our church, who's been standing up for all lives, have been threatened. Our lives have been threatened. My kids have been threatened. And yet, we stand for freedom. We stand for truth. We stand for the American people. And what we ask you as as our representatives is to pass the ordinance and to protect our kids and create an atmosphere where our kids can actually flourish and give them hope and a future. We just ask you to grab the Constitution and look at it and apply it, which is what we've entrusted you guys to do. So I charge you guys to think about this virus that's going on and think, is it gonna be eradicated? Is it gonna be completely removed? No, I think we need to get to the point of how do we move forward? And we're creating two classes of citizens with the whole redistricting. You guys are talking about redistricting. There's gonna be two districts, the vaccinated and unvaccinated.
Thank you.
I want, I want to comment something.
Yeah. I'll tell you what, can we, can we grab those, a couple of comments?
Raise the point clearly, and I'd like to respond very briefly.
Okay. You go ahead and be seated. Thank you.
Mr. Sosidum? We haven't voted it down. What we did is we put it over, because the Supreme Court will speak on this issue, and it may completely nullify anything we do. Because if the Supreme Court strikes down vaccine mandates, then that applies to the whole nation.
Yeah, that's federal for for businesses with a hundred people or more. We're talking about an ordinance that protects us from the county, because the mandate's coming from the county. It's not coming from the federal.
Sir, we get it. We can't get into that back and forth here. He was just trying to help explain it.
I understand.
And that's what I was trying to do with Becky. Becky, Becky, Becky.
Let me finish, please.
Please. Sir, can you just be seated, and he'll go ahead and finish his comment here, okay?
The scope may be broader than just the federal mandate. It may be a strike down of all mandates. It may be that. And if it does, it would moot out our issue. If it doesn't, then this will come back, and we'll deal with it.
No.
No, they're gonna decide very quickly.
Please, please, please.
They're gonna decide very quickly.
Becky, I've offered to sit down with you and explain to you the idiosyncrasies of how that charter works. So when you want to do that, just give me a call. You know how to get me, and we can sit down, have coffee, and I can go over that with you. Some of the other folks have repeated.
No, I won't count on that. This is the place to speak about it.
All right, no, that's fine. I just stand this out there for you. City Clerk, next speaker, please.
Eul Gavargas.
Eul?
I don't know.
Eul is sitting back there. Eul still here? Mr. Gavargas? Okay, all right, next speaker?
Jason Zink.
Mr. Zink?
Again, I objected to the one minute. I think if people come out here and spend, take the time, you should hear them. That's what I would do if I was a mayor, councilman. I just want to tell people about the Amazon project on Tenth Street West and Columbia Way. They're gonna build a one-million-square-foot facility. They're gonna have a meeting here January twenty-seventh at three P.M., and they're gonna destroy hundreds and hundreds of Joshua trees. How many times are we gonna let developers come in and not protect desert woodlands? Lancaster has a desert woodlands. Palmdale does not. Our symbol is the Joshua tree. That's how Palmdale was founded, by the Joshua tree. And yet, we don't have one park dedicated to Joshua trees. With Amazon being a billion-dollar corporation, we could go in partnership with them and build this and and name it after them or do something. But I want the public to know that on January twenty-seventh at three P.M., they are gonna have a hearing on the Amazon warehouse on Tenth Street West and Columbia Way.
I'm.
Thank you. Thank you. So just so you remember that we had a Joshua tree ordinance. I think you helped us back when I was on Planning Commission, craft that native vegetation ordinance, took into more consideration the just the Joshuas. But the state has taken that over. So if you like the state doing everything that the state's doing and saying, this is the numbers we're gonna do, and this is how we're gonna do it, that's what we have to deal with, you know? So we're sensitive to that. And, you know, Lockheed just went through this, and we almost lost Lockheed because of some of the requirements the state put on them. So just want to let you know that. So, but I understand, because I helped bring that forward when I was on planning. So. Okay, next speaker, please.
Mark Napolitano.
Mark, are you here? Is Mark here? Napolitano? Mark left? Okay.
David Ross.
David left? Okay.
Jade Alexander.
Maybe Wade. Wade? Wade out there?
Wade Alexander, are you out there?
He was just here. Might be in the restroom. In the lobby, can you check and see if Wade's there? He took off? Okay.
Renee.
Somebody, Renee. Renee?
Good evening. Thank you for having me. My name is Oscar Canales. I would like, like to start off with some facts. The World Health Organization International Agency for Research on Cancer made headlines around the world when it announced that processed meats caused cancer. Processed meat include bacon, salami, bologna, hot dog, sausages, cornered beef, pastrami, canned meat, and ham. This category also includes any meat has been preserved by smoking, curing, salting, and adding preservatives. I want, I bring this up because this should be a number-one concern. Two people have spoken on how many families have been affected by cancer. Processed meat is a known contributor to this, and only only five to ten percent of cancers are directly from gene defects. I ask and urge this board to take into consideration under twenty-one of federal regulations, fifty point twenty-three and twenty-four. It is illegal to make anyone participate in experimental program using corrosion laws currently using number code under eighteen. You know, under Operation Paperclips, we allowed twenty-two Nazi generals and sixteen hundred Nazi foot soldiers to infiltrate this country. It explains why we live in Kazakh and have
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. City Clerk? City clerk?
David Akers.
David Akers.
Mikey.
Back at the, oh, oh, garden, okay.
Mikey Spalding.
Mike Spalding. Mr. Spalding? Okay.
Carol Ross.
Carol.
Um, I come before you as a Christian wife, mother, and patriot. Um, I believe in the word of God. It says decrea thing and shall be established. That's what I'm here to do. Second Corinthians seventeen says, "Where the spirit of the Lord is, there is liberty." Our liberties have been greatly infringed upon the last two years, and tonight was atrocious display of, uh, of just tyranny happening here. Isaiah thirty, uh, verse one says, "What sorrow awaits my rebellious children," says the Lord. "You make plans that are contrary to mine, you make alliances not directed by my spirit, thus piling up your sins." Uh, I was coming here today to urge you to be in alignment with God's plans for liberty and vote yes on the Freedom Ordinance of fif- uh, fifteen seventy-seven. Uh, but that kinda got shut down with all your guys' shenanigans tonight. Do not be deceived. God cannot be mocked. A man reaps what he sows. Therefore, as we have opportunity, let us do good to all people. And that's my prayer, that you would do good to all people and not continue to treat the people of Palmdale with such absolute disrespect. Uh, decrea thing and it shall be established. It has been decreed, it shall be established.
Thank you. So, so I apologize, but, uh, we had to, uh, there was respect that was necessary for the, uh, for the people that were already speaking in here, and you owed them that level of respect as well. Thank you very much. Go ahead.
Jaleen Davidson.
Davidson? Jaleen Davidson? Next speaker?
Christine, Palmdale Freedom Coalition.
Christine? Christine? Next speaker?
Ryan Uribe.
Ryan Uribe. That's right, she does too. That's the one we use.
All right. So, the, I'm here for pro, uh, ordinance fifteen seventy-seven. And, uh, I'm not gonna be paying any of the testing fines. I'm, I'm not gonna be paying for any testing, and I'm not gonna be fined for any of the stuff that you're gonna try to impose, and 'cause this is what's going on in, in Europe and in Australia, and that's what they're trying to bring here. And, but, it's ridiculous. You guys are, you're gonna make me pay twenty thousand dollars just for being unvaccinated? That's, that, that's pretty messed up. And we're taking, we're taking orders from doctors that, Palmdale doctor arrested on federal narcotics charges for issuing prescriptions without medical need after telemedicine sessions. And alleged, and po- LA County Public Official sentenced on one year in federal prison for accepting bribes and cheating on income tax returns. Former Palmdale physician sentenced to two years in federal prison for defrauding Medicare and illegally prescribing opioid drugs. Palmdale resident charged with trafficking methamphetamines. And one basic truth can be used as a foundation for mountain of lies. And if we dig deep enough in the mountain of lies and bring out that truth to set out on top of the mountain of lies, the entire mountain of lies will crumble under the weight of that one truth.
Thank you, thank you, Ryan, thank you. So just so you're aware, we're not, we're not levying any fines, that's not us, that's the county. Next speaker, please. Sir. Sir. Who's the next speaker, please?
This is for item sixteen point one, Renee, speaking on county jails.
What number?
Sixteen point one. The gentleman stated sixteen point one. That's on the committee.
That's just a report, that's not a, yeah. But is Renee here? Guess not. Okay, what's the next one?
Anna Graves.
I'd like to give the remainder of my time to my son, Jason Zink.
Doesn't work that way, doesn't work that way.
Yes, it does.
Next speaker, please. Thank you.
Yes, it does. You're saying the county.
Doesn't work that way.
Doesn't allow that?
That was the last speaker, Mayor.
Thank you very much.
No, that's exactly how it's allowed. You're going against my constitutional right. It's gonna cost you a loss.
Okay, see you there. Thank you, thank you very much.
You just made me a rich man.
Thank you very much. It was her opportunity, so, all right. So, uh, that, that ends the public comment time, and we will move on to item, uh, eleven, the, uh, Palmdale Civic Authority Consent Calendar.
Excuse me, Mayor?
Yes.
We have a young lady?
Yeah, I turned one in.
What was your name, ma'am?
Adriana Salsaba. Adriana Salmi.
Might have been, it's hard to read. Come on forward, go ahead, come on.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen, uh, Mayor Hofbauer, who are my neighbor and knocked on my door, and I voted for you. And I voted for you on the expectation that you would not give our team over to the ordinance of vaccine mandate. We own a business out here, a small business, and we expect you to do your job. I voted for you to do your job. And I have a brother right now who's in ICU with COVID, who got the vaccine, did the booster, and also have a child who has type one diabetes, who lives her life with freedom and is extremely healthy. So this vaccine nonsense doesn't work. I have a brother right now who's in ICU, who's very confused and upset. He followed the mandates, he did everything that was supposed to be done, and now he has COVID and is fighting for his life. So I expect you guys to do your job, and I expect you guys to free our city from any vaccine mandates. And I don't care who's threatening you, I don't care who's blackmailing you, I don't care about any of it.
Thank you.
That's what I expect.
I think ideologically and philosophically, we don't disagree with you, but there's, there's certain standards in the fact that we don't have our own health department, which would cost us more than, than, than the, than, 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 so. Well, I've asked for the experts and they've declined to, to bring me them, so. I can't get into a debate with you here, but I'm just telling you, if you have that information, I, I repeatedly asked the organizers to get him to me, and I haven't got him, so, okay? Uh, is that it then, city clerk?
Yes.
Thank you, okay. All right, so we're on eleven, eleven point one?
Do I need to make a move to close public comments?
No, we're, we're on another agenda item at this point.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's not working.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Uh, all right, this item is a cleanup item for the Palmdale Civic Authority. Long story short, the bylaws for the Palmdale Civic Authority describe that the regular meeting of the PCA will be set by resolution. Uh, almost thirty years ago, it was set by resolution to be the second Thursday of the month uh, at a location that I believe no longer exists, and so this will clean that up to effectuate the meeting to occur simultaneously or in conjunction with city council meetings at a similar location. It's merely a cleanup, uh, resolution.
Thank you. Any, any, uh, any particular comments or questions or motion on this item?
I have a, um, concern with this one. It, it, it seems to me that it may be, um, out of order uh, because item fourteen point four is gonna be about the regular meeting days of the city council. I understand it's just a cleanup item. But item fourteen four is gonna be about the setting of regular meeting days for the city council. And this is an item that I brought in front of the council three, four months ago when I requested the meetings be changed from Tuesdays to Wednesdays. And there was discussion of, uh, putting these Wednesday meetings to see how it was gonna work. Uh, and now that, uh, fourteen point four is back on the agenda for consideration of the regular meeting and dates of the city council. If you recall, when I made that request to change it to Wednesdays, there was discussion of potentially making those meetings on Thursdays. And there was discussion amongst the council that this was going to be no, I don't wanna use the wrong words, but like a trial period to see how the Wednesday meetings would work. So that's my point, that's why I bring, uh, this item. So how do we handle that? Can we then change the order of the items to fourteen point four?
Well, I, I captured that in the resolution. What I did is rather than fixing a date, which is what they did in the old resolution that gave us trouble, what I stated was just the regular meeting, um, so it'd be the, the regularly scheduled meeting of the city council. So as our date moves, this would move in conjunction with it. So if, if and when our date moves at any time in the future, this would move with that.
So it just moves with whatever the council meeting date is?
That's correct.
Okay, that solves that. Okay, any other discussion, questions, or motion on that item?
Just to point out that the staff report on this item, on the background, it talks that the meetings were on Thursdays. This dates back to nineteen eighty-eight. Uh, again, I just wanna make that point that, uh, back in nineteen eighty-eight, council meetings were done on Thursdays. I remember there was discussion about if meetings had ever been done on a Thursday. So this background on the staff report confirms that meetings were done back in Thursday.
Yeah, I think we were, I think we were, we were on a five-day week back then, so.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions, comments, or motion?
I'll move that proof.
Okay, I have a mo- I have a motion and a second. Uh, city clerk, call, call the, uh, roll, please.
Vice Chair Loa.
Yes.
Directors Carillo.
Yes.
Bishop.
Yes.
Beckenport.
Yes.
And Chair Hofbauer.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, so we're on the item number twelve here, consent calendar. Um, there was a request for an explanation on, uh, twelve point six, and I think if we had, uh, you know, somebody here from Public Works that can briefly explain that. Chuck, can you come up, uh, on that one? I don't know if it needs a separate vote, but I would just think for clarification purposes on this item.
Yes, sir, Mayor.
Are we, are we giving something away here?
Now, we're, we, well, we are. We're giving, uh, the city has obtained rights to certain water that, uh, was purchased by the Joshua Ranch Development. And then as a part of the CFD that was formed to pay for that water, they have to pay for the water, no matter what, no matter what, right up front. Every year, they have to pay that, for that water. Um, but they're not using it for homes until they build the homes. So everything that's not used, the city has rights to it. We can either put it in the ground or we can sell it. So in the past, we have sold and we have put it in the ground at times. So water is scarce at this, during this period of time, or it's more scarce. And so instead of pulling it out of the groundwater, Palmdale Water District, AVEC, are gonna each, this, this would allow each one to have half of our allotment for a sale price that would be on the market, and the market happens to be high this year. I think our sale for this water two years ago was about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So it's, uh, it's really just, uh, I mean, if the council wanted, we could not sell the water and we could put it in the ground, uh, wheel it through the wa- aqueduct and put it in the ground that the Amargosa, uh, Creek recharge. When we do that, we lose ten percent of the water. That's the way that the water master works. So it would be ten percent less than the five hundred and sixty acre feet that we, uh, have the right to. In this case, we sell it to those two agencies, and then they use it for their customers.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Any questions from the council? Uh, is anything, any other items that you wanna pull?
Twelve point seven.
Twelve point seven?
I vote twelve point nine.
All right, anything else? Okay, so twelve seven, uh, Chuck, did you wanna address that item, uh, again? Don't disappear. My understanding on this was, this is, uh, formalizing what has been essentially sort of a informal process in the past?
Yes, twelve point seven, this is the, uh, if I can get it up here. Yeah, this is, this is a, an agreement between, uh, several agencies within the valley for mutual aid during emergency, and it allows for, uh, an agency to call on the other agencies that in, that are in need. And then it makes the arrangements for reimbursement from those agencies that are receiving the, uh, the, the benefit or the, or the, you know, that need the aid, they have to repay that to the other agencies. So this is a, a, an agreement. At this point, LA County is not a part of this, but they are looking at it and they are intending to join as well. But, uh, at this point, they are not, as well as some of the smaller agencies, but this is mainly the, the larger water agencies, City Lancaster, City of Palmdale.
This is fairly common, like between fire departments and, and, uh, police agencies and stuff like that as well.
Very, very common.
I, I, I brought this forward, I mean, I asked to be.
Of course, yeah.
Full because, uh, I think it's very important that we address issues on a regional basis, and I think this does that. Uh, I read the, the staff report. I think it was very comprehensive. I had some, uh, questions about uh, legal rights and indemnification and what happens for reimbursement purposes, and it's all thoroughly covered. Uh, I think it's, I, I pulled it so that, uh, perhaps it could be given, uh, more attention, uh, to the public that we do need to address regional issues as a regional, uh, approach between the, uh, cities. And the county, I hope, will participate at well at some point.
Yes.
So I think it's well done, and, uh, thank you very much for all the work you're doing on this point.
And the city attorney's office helped with this. We had some language that had to be worked out, but that was a collaborative effort.
And I can see that it was done.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this item? All right, so, uh, there was a question on twelve point nine. What was your, uh, uh, on that item, sir?
Yeah, so, uh, I know, I know you got a couple messages from people in the area. It was the, uh, the overlay or the Cape Steel that was done in, in some of District One, and some of it was really messy. I just wanted to open up that discussion and see what, 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 what we can do before we go further with more jobs with this company to make sure that we're getting the best product possible, 'cause a lot of our streets were resurfaced and, and it definitely wasn't the cleanest work. I know you've seen some of the pictures, Mayor, haven't you?
Yeah, so I gotten, I've gotten those same calls and, uh, I had some of the similar issues in my neighborhood. We've still got cracks that have never been addressed that were, you know, I can stick my fingers in. And, uh, so I, I really think that we just need to make sure that, that, uh, you know, the, the, the neighbors get very excited when their streets are getting fixed. And then as soon as there's an issue, then our phones blow up. So, uh, what can we do to, uh, help this process?
Well, I think that, uh, the, 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 uh, the problems that we had in the, uh, in, uh, Housenham Bishop's neighborhood, they, uh, we had this added late, and we, we did some of this work in a, a, usually like to do it in the summer when it's very warm. This was done a little bit later in the fall. It was warm. I would, I would say that the, uh, we were aware that the quality wasn't good, um, as they finished it. And they had every intention of coming back, and they did, and, uh, I think that, uh, you know, we've had everybody go out there, at least from a staff standpoint, um, and we believe that this is as good as, as, um, as the other areas of the city that have gotten the same treatment, the same type of, uh, of overlay. Uh, this is not a, a grind and overlay with a brand-new, uh, surface of asphalt. This is a, something that is a fraction of the price of that type of, of a replacement. And it's, it's something that if you really wanna stretch the dollars that we have for, uh, repaving and continuing to extend the life of the, of our streets, um, this is, this is the, uh, the way that we've, uh, and, and it's really an industry standard as well. It's something that a lot of agencies do.
Well, I think that, I, I think they're just looking for, uh, maybe, uh, maybe the guys can pay a little more attention when these guys are doing it because, uh, uh, again, it's, uh, it's just, it's disappointing to build up the excitement, your street's getting fixed, and then to hear a complaint, you know? And I just think it's, I think it's ironic that the name is Manhole Adjusting, but I can close my eyes and tell you where every manhole is.
Right.
Coming down Homridge, so.
Yeah, that is, is a, a name that doesn't really reflect what they, what their base was that they did for us, at least.
Yeah, 'cause I know they did a couple in our area, but, uh, boy, I tell you, everybody figured there was gonna be something fixed there, so.
Well, we'll definitely take that. I, I understand that, that sometimes the, the cracks reflect up through the new surface, and, and so we'll take that back and we'll definitely work with, uh, you know, let them know that we've got those concerns and that they, we need to work on something. Maybe there's a fabric that we can put down prevent those for cracks from lifting through or, or something else.
All right, I think there was some.
We can do, 'cause I've seen other, over, other overlays in other cities and other areas that look just cleaner, like where the pavement meets the gutter and, and just the overall finish work of, of when you do an overlay and then butt it up to another overlay, it's just, it's so noticeable, so. I've had a few people reach out to me, even one recently, that just says their street just looks awful. And that's just not what we want, especially for the kind of money we're spending.
Yep.
So we, so you're, you're aware of the concern?
Duly noted.
Okay, thank you very much, sir.
I have a question about twelve point eleven. I don't know if it's yours, uh, Mr. Hattler.
Okay.
I was gonna ask Mr. Padilla, but, uh, there wasn't enough time, uh, to talk to him today, but.
Yeah, this is the, the, uh.
Fairway Drive.
Right.
Six hundred feet north of Rancho.
This is just the, the city's acceptance of a sewer that was, the sewer was constructed for the project. We inspected it as it was going in, and this is the acceptance of the sewer from the developer into the city. We inspected it as it was going in, and this is the acceptance of the sewer from the developer into the city.
Okay.
For maintenance.
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Any other items? Thank you for getting twelve point two on there, so we can get some of these no parking and no stopping signs either added or removed as necessary. All right, anything else, or a motion on the consent calendar, please?
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Have a motion to approve?
Second.
Have a second. City clerk, please.
Mayor Protim, Vice Chair Loa.
Yes.
Councilmember Directors Carrillo.
Yes.
Bishop.
Yes.
Bettencourt.
Yes.
And Mayor Chair Hoffbauer.
Yes. Okay, thirteen point one is an appointment. Who's, uh, who's giving us that, uh, report?
I will give the report, sir.
Okay, ma'am.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, this item before you is to approve the reappointment of the public member to the Recycle Water Authority. Um, Ms. Anson has expressed her desire to continue to be the public member.
Someone is speaking, I can't hear you.
Ms. Anson has expressed her desire to continue being the, um, public member of the Palmdale Recycle Water Authority, and the Palmdale Water District has already approved it. So it's been brought before the council to approve the item.
Thank you, and her, her, she doesn't have any problem with attendance, and everybody's been happy, no complaints?
Right.
Okay, all right. Any, uh, comments from the, uh, council, or, um, a motion?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve? You have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, city clerk?
Mayor Protim, Vice Chair Loa.
Yes.
Councilmembers Directors Carrillo.
Yes.
Bishop.
Yes.
Bettencourt.
Yes.
And Mayor Chair Hoffbauer.
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you. Moving on to item number fourteen on public hearings, we already did fourteen point one. Uh, fourteen point two, uh, I think, uh, it's, well, it looks like Chuck's back up, just a Chuck Heffernan show.
Thank you, Mayor, and City Council, the fourteen point two will be a presentation by our, uh, city traffic engineer, Jay Nelson. I know we've, we've been here quite a while, so I'll be very quick. Every seven to ten years, we have to do new speed surveys to update the posted speed limit, so they're enforceable. We hired a consultant, Andrew Yee, he's on the line if there's any technical questions about the actual radar surveys and things that were done. What we did was, um, complete traffic counts, um, speed radar studies at free-flow speed on two hundred and twenty-two links within the city. It's a major effort, and then we have to document all of the work that was done and submit that so that the sheriff's department can enforce the posted speed limits. Out of those two hundred and twenty links, we've, um, kept the speed limit the same, all of those. We have not increased the speed limit at any location. We have decreased it by five miles per hour on thirty-five, I think is, thirty-five or thirty-six segments. There's just three minor typos in the ordinance. There are, on page four of the ordinance, we always have the same speed limit posted going both directions in the same segment. And late in the process, we found three locations where we were able to decrease it by five miles per hour, but we only, accidentally, the secretary only changed one direction, and so just to match it, so it's right. On page four, Avenue Q, State Highway fourteen, Fifth Street to West should be forty-five instead of fifty. On page, um, nineteen, there's one typo. On page twenty, it's one typo, and it's just so it matches the lower of the two speed limits on the same link. And I can give that information. Be happy to answer any other questions. And our, like I said, our consultants here to answer questions, too, if you have other.
All right, except.
I have a question. Uh, well, first, first, let me say thank you for bringing down the speed limits. People drive way too fast in the Al- Valley. Um, the other question I have is, is it, is it your group that would help to put signage up? The trucks are still coming down Avenue S after we did all that work in repaving. How do we get signs up to say that this is not a truck route? Or is that something completely out of your unit?
No, I mean, we could put up no trucks allowed. We've designated specifically where trucks are in the city, and, and that can be enforced by all the sheriff. So there, there are city maps, it's, we could maybe do a better job of advertising where they're not supposed to be, but we, we just don't want to get in the position where we're putting no trucks on every street in the city, because
Sure.
there's only designated routes they're supposed to be on.
Yeah, no, I got that, and we kind of, we were very lenient with them when Pear Blossom Highway was closed, but I think they've gotten into some very bad habits, perhaps, and they're, they're coming down, you know, Avenue S after all that new, new paving went in, and all that upgrade that we did, and, uh, I, I live off of S, and so every single day, you know, coming and going to work, um, there's trucks up and down at Avenue S all day long. So maybe we could just put some signs.
But one thing to be aware of, too, even in places where trucks are not allowed to go, they, they're allowed to go to make specific deliveries and things in the city.
Oh, sure, yeah, yeah, I'm aware of that. I know what segments they're not supposed to be on. And the sheriffs do their best to get out there and, and to ticket them, but, you know, everybody's facing staff shortages with COVID and everything else, so I think just a, a gentle reminder for some of these truck drivers that, hey, you're on the wrong street would be really helpful.
Yeah, and if it's a, if it's a big problem on just one or two streets, we can put up a sign.
So I think that where, where that's helpful is, because when we were going through this with the Pear Blossom, I went out and looked at the major access points to Avenue S, and those were at, uh, at Sierra Highway, and at Forty-seventh were the two major ones, and there was another one at Twenty-fifth. Those are the ones where trucks were, and vehicles were getting diverted. However, uh, uh, I believe it was, might have been Mr. Padilla, or maybe it was Chuck, said, I think the signs are there. And I went out there, and sure enough, there's a great big, whatever it is, two-foot-by-three-foot sign that's got an arrow that says Truck Route, tells them where to go. Uh, so I don't, I don't know what else we can do, except maybe add, uh, no truck arrow there, because that's where they seem to come in. The other point, and I've been getting, um, some contacts on this, there's some areas where it's difficult, like when you come out of, uh, the Eastside Target. So we go over there and we shop all the time, because that's a much better target than any other ones in the valley. That one, when you come out of the loading docks in the back, you can only go right, and the guys have gotten tickets out there. So I don't know if there's a way that we can make an adjustment along there. When I brought it up to the captain, the captain said, I lost it illegal, you know? So, um, uh, and, and I looked at it, and, and I drive a big trailer on my camper, and, uh, and I'm not a bad backer, but boy, I tell you, there's some spots when you try to get into the back in those parking areas, there's a couple of trucks back there. You cannot turn around and go back out and get out towards, uh, I think it's Forty-seventh on the other side there. So you're stuck, if you come in, follow them in a truck route, and you come in, and you unload, and you continue out, you're stuck because you cannot make a left turn. There's a raised median barricade there, so they have to go back out. So things like that, I think that we need to make sure that we, perhaps those are the types of spots where we put the signs up that tells them, now you gotta turn, you know? So that these guys can write the ticket, and they're not getting beat up in court over, over this stuff, you know?
One of the really interesting things is, I, I feel most of the city comments related to traffic from citizens calling in, and they always want speed humps or signs.
Yeah.
But that doesn't, you can put up a zillion signs, people just ignore them, so. So we, there's sign pollution, and, and if you put the right signs in the right place, they're good, but we want to minimize where we're putting them.
Right. I do have a question on one section here. A couple of years ago, the neighbors all got together in Storm City Hall to have, uh, two areas, Rancho Vista Boulevard and, uh, Bowls Ranch Road, looked at, uh, from a speed standpoint, and the speed went up when they did this, uh, because of the eighty-fifth percentile. Now, the eighty-fifth percentile is not written in stone anymore, we know that, because I helped Friedman, uh, uh, at the legislature. We testified on that and provided that input, uh, back when I used to be a SCAG rep, and since then. Uh, I also, I noticed that we go from forty-five to fifty on Bowls Ranch Road, and it, it goes, the speed limit goes up right where you get by three schools, a golf course, and a park. That's asinine, that we increase the speed by three schools, a golf course, and a park. So, um, I know that the bill allows us to create zones around things like school, uh, uh, um, uh, other public, um, locations like golf courses, and we can also have a park zone. I want to see us come back, so we can lower the speed limit as we start coming up the parks. Because you go over by Yellen, kids are trying to get across the street to get to Yellen. Mazzari, uh, we've already, we, Bowls Ranch Road's already had a fatal, and we're still in court about that over there. So I don't want to get any more detail before the city attorney starts throwing rocks at me. But we need to do a better job on that, and I know that, you know, you, you weren't here, so I can't beach up over other people's lame-brained solutions here, but, man, it is not smart when you got three schools, a park, and a golf course, and all that foot traffic over there, including a bike lane. I can't ride my bike on the freeway, because it's not safe. But I have bike lanes on, on some of these streets where the speed limit is higher than a freeway. Somebody needs to explain that to me, so, can we look at that?
I will definitely look at it, and I'm a bike rider and share your same concerns, and that was one of the major things I noticed when I first got here. The, the bill you're referring to, I meant to mention that as I did my report, but I tried to condense it a little bit. We have taken into account those. We still have to go off the eighty-fifth percentile speed, and the maximum we can reduce from that is we can round down, and then we can round, go five miles below that. So we've applied everything we could in that assembly bill, and still have something that we could enforce, so that, that it won't get thrown out.
But I think there's also where you can create special zones, so I think we,
But that would require, that would require city ordinances to set the limit.
We can do that.
Right, but, but, but it did, so that would be a separate process, but following the, the current law and regulations, we've set the speed limits as low as we could and be able to enforce them.
Let's look at that, thanks.
May I, may I ask a question? Uh, if I understand this right, uh, there were four segments of Palmdale Boulevard that were addressed in this report, and in this ordinance?
Not.
I'm talking about Palmdale Boulevard.
Palmdale Boulevard is controlled by Caltrans, so we do not set, we don't set any speed limits on Palmdale Boulevard.
That brings up that point.
The city portion.
West of fourteen.
Right, west of fourteen.
Yeah, west of, west of the fourteen, and that brings up, uh, the same concern that we've talked about in the past, and, uh, you know, if Mr. Carrillo makes it to the assembly, maybe he can address that up there.
It's your first charge.
Uh, because, uh, you know, really, the speeding on Palmdale Boulevard is, is amazing. When you can move the cars through there, because oftentimes the traffic is very heavy. But when it's not, there's cars that are just speeding through there, running at red lights, and, uh, since we don't have control over that boulevard, uh, I think it's hazardous, uh, that may be the responsibility of the state.
When part of that's sort of in the bill, like in a downtown area, you can set the speed limit lower, and if we designated Palmdale Boulevard as like the main street, there's some leeway to do things like that. At this point, Caltrans has done a pretty good job of setting the speed limits lower than I think the eighty-fifth percentile speed is on that whole.
I think we're just leaving, just leaving it up to Caltrans and UP, and with the built-in speed bumps that they have created by their lack of maintenance, uh, it slows them down anyhow.
Yeah.
Uh, but it does slow them down.
Artificial speed bump, yeah.
I've seen some cars going through there that's incredible speeds.
Yeah.
So, before you, before we leave, um, I'm told by the city clerk that we have to read the ordinance into, into the records.
Okay, can we please read the ordinance in, for the public record, please?
Uh, this is, uh, ordinance number fifteen seventy-six, an ordinance of the City Council, the City of Palmdale, amending chapter ten point oh-four of the Title X of the Palmdale Municipal Code relating to vehicles and traffic.
Okay, can I have, please have a motion to introduce that ordinance?
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Loa?
Second.
Second by Mr. Carrillo. City clerk?
Mayor Protim Loa.
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo.
Yes.
Bishop.
Yes.
Bettencourt.
Yes.
And Mayor Hoffbauer.
Yes, so we have a public hearing that follows on that. Anybody have any public comments, do we have any speaker cards on this item, ma'am?
No, we don't, sir.
Anybody left in the audience that's willing to, wants to speak on this kind of stuff? Too wonky, all right. Motion to close public hearing, please?
So moved. Second.
A second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing non-saw ordered. Staff recommendation is to adopt ordinance number fifteen seventy-six. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Loa?
Second.
A second by Mr. Carrillo. City clerk?
Mayor Protim Loa.
Yes.
Councilmembers Carrillo.
Yes.
Bishop. Bettencourt. Bettencourt?
Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
And Mayor Hoffbauer.
Yes, and, don't go on mute button. All right, uh, fourteen three was tabled, fourteen four, uh, public hearing for ordinance fifteen seventy-eight. Uh, staff to read that ordinance.
Thank you, this is ordinance number fifteen seventy-eight, an ordinance of the City Council, the City of Palmdale, amending Palmdale Municipal Code Section two point oh-eight point oh-four oh, relating to the setting of regular meetings of the City Council.
Excellent. Okay, we need a motion to introduce the ordinance.
So moved.
You have a motion by Carrillo?
Second.
Second by, uh, Mr. Loa? All in favor to introduce the ord- oh, we do roll call on that.
Mayor Protim Loa.
Yes.
Councilmembers Carrillo.
Yes.
Bishop.
Yes.
Bettencourt.
Yes.
And Mayor Hoffbauer.
Yes. Uh, we have a public hearing, uh, on, uh, fifteen seventy-eight. Any speaker slips on this, ma'am?
No, sir.
Okay, anybody in the audience that wanted to speak on fifteen seventy-eight?
Looks if he.
Hey, you have one?
We have one person with his hand raised, but I'm not sure if it's on this item. He's had it raised for a few minutes. So, are you okay if I?
What's the nu- what's the last forward to number?
Uh, his name is Marcos Alvarez.
Michael Alvarez, did you want to speak on this item, or did you just leave it up? Going once, Michael Alvarez, twice?
Ma- Marcos Alvarez.
Marcos Alvarez.
Marcos.
Marcos Alvarez. Okay, all right, motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anybody opposed? Okay. Um, so, uh, staff recommendation is to adopt fifteen seventy-eight. Any comments or a motion?
Uh, that means that what, that the meeting, if we adopt this, then the meetings stay on Wednesdays, right? The Wednesdays, okay, yeah, so moved.
Stuck it.
A motion and a second?
I'd like to make a substitute motion for the meetings to be changed to Thursdays.
Okay, I have a substitute motion for Thursday, is there a second to that? Okay, hearing none, it dies for lack of a second, we're back to the primary motion. Uh, city clerk, call the roll, please.
Mayor Protim Loa.
Yes.
Councilmembers Carrillo.
Yes.
Bishop.
Yes.
Bettencourt.
Yes.
And Mayor Hoffbauer.
Yes. Okay, we have, um, fourteen point five, public hearing and proposed resolution number CC, uh, two zero two-two dash zero one for adoption. Staff to read the resolution, please.
Okay, uh, this is a resolution of the City of Council of the City of Palmdale, authorizing use of the bond opportunities for land development, whole program, and authorizing the California Municipal Finance, Finance Authority to accept applications from property owners, conduct proceedings, and levy special taxes within the territory of City of Palmdale pursuant to the Melrose Community Facility Act of nineteen eighty-two, as amended, and authorizing related actions. So we're asking, uh, council, uh, to open and close public hearing, and also adopt resolution, uh, twenty twenty-two dash zero zero one.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and open a public hearing, receive testimony, item number fourteen point five, resolution number two zero two-two dash zero one. City clerk, do we have any speaker slips?
No, sir.
Anybody in the audience want to address this item? Motion to close pub-
Mister, Mister Mayor, honorable council members, this is Nelson Chung, I, I'm President of the Pacific Communities. I'm just here to address any question you may have. I know it's late in, late in the night.
We appreciate you being there. Uh, I think most of us have seen these, um, CFD issues before. We'll see if there's any questions. Uh, anybody else in the public that wants to testify? Motion to close public hearing, then?
So moved.
Have a motion?
Stuck it.
Have a second? Okay, uh, city clerk?
Mayor Protim Loa.
Yes.
Councilmembers Carrillo.
Yes.
Bishop.
Yes.
Bettencourt.
Yes.
Mayor Hoffbauer.
Yes. The meeting, uh, hearings closed, the staff recommendation is adopt, uh, two zero two-two dash zero one. Uh, this is, um, mechanism we're obligated to go through in order for CFDs, and it's just a, it's a financing mechanism. Any staff members, any, um, council members have a question for the staff?
Yeah, just have a question how this, uh, uh, I mean, I think it sounds, uh, great, uh, but I'm just wondering if it expands the, uh, Melrose Community Facilities Act of nineteen eighty-two. Uh, you know, what, what is the interaction between Bold and the, uh, Melrose? What's the impact?
So who's, who's the expert on this? Uh, my understanding was it's just a, it's just part of that, and My understanding was it's just a, it's just part of that, and we have to have this in order to enact it, correct?
So CFD, as you know, is a mechanism in place to create a tax, a property tax levy on the property development. So I think Mister Chung, either Mister Chung or Jim Zimmerman can explain this further on, on the CFDs. Jim, are you able to make comments?
Sure, sure. This, this, this bold program is, uses the Melrose Community Facilities Act. It just authorizes CMFA to use the Melrose Act. I don't know if that addresses the question specifically. If not, maybe you could clarify.
So, Mr. Zimmerman, that means that developments that may come into the future would, would use this bold program to, through the Melrose mechanism, to impose the assessments and, and attach them to the properties that are being sold.
That's right. That, that would be their option, yes.
At the developer's option.
Right.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Kind of wish we had that. We'd have had a park twenty-five years ago. So, so, all right. So any other questions or comments from the council?
I have a comment. One thing that concerns me with this is that it's going to create what I see as a burden on new homeownership. Melrose is, I understand the mechanism to bring being, bring in the infrastructure, like sewer and many other things. Good example of that is Santa Verde. And I also understand that the developers get burdened a lot with bringing the infrastructure. Like sewer, again, is expensive. But new homeowners will have to pay this Melrose for twenty-three years, whatever the case may be. And I don't think that this is going to be a way to lower the house, the, the housing prices. Because we know we are in a housing shortage. I understand that this will facilitate it for developers, single-family, residential, multifamily. But it's gonna be a burden on new, future homeowners, which, again, I don't think that this will lower the, the high prices of housing. I say this as a, a way to incentivize even more the developers, because now they won't have to burn the expense of bringing the infrastructure. That's just a comment. I, I believe that that's what's gonna happen. But that's just the way that I interpret this. Just wanted to let you guys know about this.
So, and I, I understand that, and, and I think you're right. Couple of things. Number one is you're not obligated to that. You can pay it. So if you're moving from another house, you're coming in, you can, you can pay your piece of that bond up, upfront, and you're not stuck with it for the next twenty or thirty years. Secondly, when we looked for our new house, we, we didn't move up into Santa Verde, up in Mr. Bishop's area, because we saw the CFD up there, and we thought, geez, that's a lot. Had I known I was gonna wait twenty-five years to get my streets completed and my park built, I'd have moved up there. I'd have had brand-new streets, new landscaping, two new parks and a school. I would have, you know, I hadn't thought that thoroughly through. So I think that it's, it's, buyers gotta make that choice. And, and I think that it also prevents the situation that we've had with some other developments where we have had a two-lane road with a giant dirt shoulder for an inordinate amount of time and nothing getting done. And because the development stopped and the road never got done. So I think that that prevents that from occurring. So I, I, I think it's a balance. And I think that with adequate knowledge, you know, people can make their choice, you know?
I'll comment on this if I could. You know, looking at the housing element that we're gonna be considering in a, in a little bit, we had a total of eight hundred and nine single-family units built between twenty-ten and twenty-twenty-one, between twenty-ten and twenty-twenty-one. And, and that may be because developers such as Mister Chung aren't coming here because that, that may be a deterrent. We are in drastic need of housing. And Palmdale continues to be an affordable area for quality housing in Los Angeles County. If, and I would ask Mister Zimmerman, in your consideration of, of this matter, your analysis, do you think that this would spur or encourage, incentivize developers to build more housing in Palmdale?
Yes, yes, it absolutely would. We see that all over the state, particularly all over Southern California. It's an important financing mechanism for, for me developing it to get the infrastructure installed timely.
And so the balancing act that you speak of, Mayor, to me, is the concerns that Mister Correo has raised. And I have that concern too, the impact that it has on, on purchasers and the decision they have to make if they're informed, and usually through real estate process, they are informed. Particularly if they have a, a real estate agent that is competently taking care of them. And so those issues are presented to them during the process of escrow. So the balancing that I see is if we can get more housing out of it, because we have this mechanism, I think that outweighs the issue of the purchasers that are gonna, that are going to be going in. There's mechanisms where they can avoid this, as the mayor pointed out. And if they don't want to purchase or get stuck with a Melrose charge, they, they can look elsewhere. But I think it would give more and more ample opportunity to develop housing, not just single-family units, which we had an increase of eight hundred and nine total. And five hundred and three of them were single-family dwellings, and three hundred and six were other types. If I'm reading this report correctly, that's very, very, very little growth as far as housing development is concerned. And we have Mister Chung, who is one of the builders that has stuck it out through thick and thin, and he's building these things. And I think Mister Chung, I believe, is, is believing that this would help him in the development of even more housing in Palmdale. And from everything I've seen of the developments that Mister Chung is bringing to the City of Palmdale, they're quality housing, they're affordable housing, they're very attractive housing. And it's more of this that we, I, I think that we ought to be encouraging to come here. So I think the balance is in favor of this, of this ordinance.
Yeah, I'd like to speak on that, seeing how I, I do live in Santa Verde and I do have a Melrose. And, or a CFD. I think, I think they're a good thing. I actually, having experience coming from Santa Clarita, knowing that most of their valley actually does have Melrose and CFDs. Pretty much all of Stevenson Ranch, all of Valencia, and a lot of different areas throughout Santa Clarita have that. And we look at the kind of quality development they have, and that's because of that. They have HOAs, they have Melrose that was more thought out and planned. When I moved in my neighborhood, I purposely wanted to find somewhere that had a Melrose and an HOA, because I know we would be getting all of our amenities. In addition to that, buying a house with a Melrose typically, the, the price of the home is lower as to compared to a house that doesn't have a Melrose. So the, the price, that difference that you guys are talking about is actually reflected in the, the home price of the sale. Like, the same house I wanted in West Palmdale that didn't have a Melrose was a hundred thousand dollars more. So the home prices are actually lower when you have the tax levy against it. So just food for thought for you guys, because I know you guys don't have any experience with, with owning homes and that. But that's what I experienced with mine.
Laura, do you have any comment?
No, I'm good.
Okay. All right, so we have a staff recommendation here to adopt CC twenty twenty-two dash zero one, correct? Is that if I'm on the right item, because I flipped the page here?
Yeah, it's zero zero one.
Okay, any other comment or a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay, have a motion and a second, sounds like, or two, two firsts or whatever. City clerk?
Mayor Protim Loa?
Yes.
Councilmembers Correo?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Bettencourt?
Yes.
And Mayor Houghbauer?
Yes.
I'll speak unanimously.
Thank you. That carries. Fourteen-six is a resolution twenty twenty-two oh-five for adoption. On a, it's an LMD, isn't it?
Yes, Mayor.
Chuck, you're up again, or still.
Yes, Mayor, this is, thank you, this is the adoption of a, of a, sorry, a landscape maintenance district for track five-four-two oh-nine, Pacific Community Builders. It's between Avenue Q twelve, Thirty-seventh Street East, Avenue R, and Thirty-Fifth Street East. And it would, I'll, I'll just read the resolution. A resolution of the City Council, CC two zero two-two dash zero zero five. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Palmdale confirming the ballot results to determine that no majority protest exists in the proceedings and ordering the formation of the district of the, sorry, formation of the City of Palmdale Landscape Maintenance Assessment District number twenty twenty dash two nine zero.
All right.
And we'll read the, should be opening the ballots and.
All right, city clerk is to open the ballot.
Assessment valid. It's voted yes for LCTH Investments.
Excellent. Okay.
One more, sir?
I'm sorry?
And we also have assessment valid from Paragon HM voted yes. The district carries.
District carries. Now we have a, any public testimony or open a public hearing? Anybody wish to testify on this item? You have any speaker slip?
No, sir.
I see. All right, motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Have a motion, second, please?
Second.
A motion, second, all in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? So ordered. Close the public hearing. The staff recommendation is to adopt CC two zero two-two dash zero zero five.
Moved to approve.
Mister Loa?
Second.
Second by Ms. Bettencourt. City clerk?
Mayor Protim Loa?
Yes.
Councilmembers Correo?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Bettencourt?
Yes.
And Mayor Houghbauer?
Yes. Mister Loa can take over for a minute. I can't wait. You have the next one.
All right. So we'll call item fourteen point seven then?
Can I raise screen here?
So do we have a?
Okay, so good evening, council. I'll go ahead and start by reading the resolution. This is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palmdale adopting the two thousand twenty-one dash two thousand twenty-nine draft general plan housing element. The item before you tonight is general plan amendment twenty-one dash zero zero four for the twenty twenty-one dash twenty twenty-nine draft housing element. State law requires each city to adopt a general plan to guide land use and development. Among the various elements of the general plan is the housing element, which establishes policies and programs for maintaining and improving existing housing as well as accommodating development of new housing to meet the city's assessed share of housing needs under the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, which will be referred to as RENA for the remainder of this presentation. The housing element must be updated every eight years and must be reviewed by the California State Department of Housing and Community Development, referred to as HCD for the remainder of this presentation. Lastly, prior to each housing element planning cycle, the region's total housing need is established by ACV, HCD based primarily on population growth trends and existing housing issues such as overcrowding and overpayment. The total housing needs for the Southern California region is then distributed to cities and counties by the Southern California Association of Governments, referred to as SCAG. The housing element is required to provide a variety of housing types for all housing types for all income groups, assist in the development of lower and moderate-to-income housing, remove constraints to housing, conserve and improve existing housing, and promote their housing. The RENA location for the City of Palmdale is six thousand six hundred and forty units total. The table on your screen breaks down the required number of units by types of housing. The City of Palmdale is required to provide one thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven low, very low-income units, nine hundred and thirty-five low-income units, one thousand and four moderate-income units, and two thousand nine hundred and twenty-four above-moderate-income units totaling in six thousand six hundred and forty units. Through a combined effort of the project, projected number of ADUs built in the next cycle, the Anna Verdi New Avenue Specific Plan, Ritter Ranch Specific Plan, and the development potential vacant sites pointed out in the draft housing element, the City of Palmdale is in compliance with HCD's requirements. An addendum to the EIR has been prepared in accordance with CEQA guidelines and has been identified that there's no new or additional significant impacts. And I do want to point out that the EIR that this is referring to is eleven dash zero one, and that was adopted in twenty twelve by the city during the last housing element update. Staff recommends that the City Council adopt resolution number PC, sorry, CC twenty twenty-two dash zero one-one, recommending the City Council approval of the draft two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-nine housing element. Direct city staff to make minor revisions to the adopted housing element if required by the California Department of Housing and Community Development. Prior to certification and finality, addendum to the Environmental Impact Report, eleven dash zero one, previously certified by the City of Palmdale in two thousand twelve, is appropriate for this project. This concludes staff's presentation. Staff and the general plan update team is available for any questions.
Okay, where are we at here? So we'll open the public hearing. Thank you for handling that. You did a great job, Mister Loa. I just couldn't wait. We'll open a public hearing, receive public testimony on item number fourteen point seven. City clerk, do you have any?
No comments.
Okay, none?
No comments over here.
Okay, a motion to close public hearing, please?
So moved.
Anybody in the audience? Okay.
All right, move to a close public.
Okay, have a motion?
Second.
Second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So ordered. Staff recommendation is adopt resolution number CC two zero two-two dash zero one-one. Any questions or comments for the staff on this item?
I just, you know, as I pointed out in the earlier, there has been such a small increase in housing in Palmdale. I mean, in fact, I think the population growth has also been very slow, but it seemed to me that the population growth exceeded the number of new housing that was created in that ten-year period.
How's that happen?
And that's one point, and I think, I think we just simply have to do everything possible to increase housing here in the city. I understand that, that the adoption of this, of this report for submission to HCD is late, and why is it, why is it late?
Anybody?
So it's, it's not actually late. I'll have Veronica chime in on this one. But we did submit the first draft to HCD back in October. Go ahead, Veronica.
Yes, the statute toward deadline is October fifteenth with a grace period of one hundred and twenty days. So we're within the grace period, so, and most of the jurisdictions are really doing the same thing right now. You're, you're actually ahead of quite a few jurisdictions in the Southern California region. Part of the problem definitely is the high number of RENA. And, and also you're dealing with general plan updates. So the housing element must be consistent with the rest of the general plan element. So the whole process together takes a little bit longer than a regular housing element update that may be just independent and not have to correlate with the rest of the general plan.
I know when we inquired on that, and I think Mister Correo's on housing down there, HCD has indicated that as long as you are, it's clear that you're moving forward with this, they were gonna be good with that, and that basically you're.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's, that's, that was my source, and, and I appreciate your, your response and the fact that we are in fact timely.
I think we're gonna have between Rancho Vista and twentieth, fifteenth, and one or two projects over on the east side. We're gonna have more housing units built this year than we have had in the last ten years.
Ten years, ten years.
Yeah, last ten years.
Right, so we need to encourage that. And, well, this is just one of those reports that will be submitted to HCD and will be analyzed by them. I think it's very comprehensive, and I appreciate the staff working as hard as it has on, on finalizing this. So that's my comment.
Anything else? Mr. Creo? This is, this is your area of expertise.
Uh, no comments.
Yeah. Mr. Bishop?
Nothing, nothing really, I, I acknowledge that we need the numbers, and, you know, I, I think we've been fairly proactive in trying to ease restrictions in order to give developers the ability to do what they need to do. And, and I hope we can just continue to keep building to make those numbers.
Excellent, okay, Ms. Bencourt?
Yeah, I agree with Austin, let's build, 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 and let's get variety, let's get some condos for old people like me that don't like to mow lawns.
I know, Gardner, okay.
Actually, yeah, retirement housing is one of the products that is.
Yeah, I know there's a couple guys that look at those. All right, excellent, and, and I know, as Mr. Bishop indicated, we have rolled back some development fees, and I think we're significantly overdue on the update, on the impact of the reduction of those impact fees. We were supposed to get an update, I think that was like a year ago almost, so not a lot happening, but we need to get that update. So we council-directed some impact fee changes, so just, let's just make sure that doesn't get lost on a back burner or get stuck in this oven. All right, any, anything else? Or a motion?
Move to approve. Okay.
Have a motion in a second? Anything further, or City Clerk?
Mayor Proton Loa?
Yes.
Councilmembers Creo?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Bencourt?
Yes.
And Mayor Hoffbauer?
All right, all right, I need a motion, it's ten-thirty, it's the witching hour, internet's going to shut down here momentarily. I need to have a, we need to get, we really need to look at this fifteen-one, otherwise we're going to lose our opportunity on some grants. Do I have a motion to continue the council meeting after the ten-thirty statutory time?
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Loa?
Second.
Second by Mr. Creo? Any other comment?
I'm going to hang in there as long as I can, you guys.
Okay, yep, I know, I'm, okay.
Mayor Proton Loa?
Yes.
Councilmembers Creo?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Bencourt?
Yes.
And Mayor Hoffbauer?
Yes, thank you, sorry folks, but we have to go through that. Okay, City Clerk, uh, City Attorney. And I know that we've all been having discussions with the project proponents on this. We appreciate your diligence and moving this forward, so we can do our best to try to take advantage in some capacity of these measures.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much, so this is, it's a discussion item to get direction from council on updating our smoking regulations via ordinance. And they're laid out in the staff report primarily broken into three different groups. The first is in definitions, where what, what we had and have defined as smoking is almost rudimentary. And so, we, we use the word weed. Whereas in the recommended language, we have more comprehensive and inclusive language, it'll include all combustible and burning products associated with that act. Likewise, as a recommended addition to eight-point-three-four-point-oh-three-oh in definitions, it's, we're not per se creating new restrictions, but we're describing them with greater certainty to ensure that we have the ability and the opportunity to enforce no smoking regulations throughout the city. Very similar with the proposed change to eight-point-three-four-point-oh-four-oh. We have a restriction on smoking on, at certain city facilities. We're adding, although they're included, we're specifically identifying as a recommendation Drytown Water Park, Palmdale Playhouse, and Palmdale City Libraries. Eight-point-three-four-point-oh.
On that item, just on that, so we go, why don't we just define it as a civic center bounded by these, the limits around here? To include but not be exclusive to the library that comes, because that's one of the complaints that I get sometimes is, you know, the whole thing, you know, it's the park, it's the library, it's all this here, and then, well, I'm not in the library, you know.
She's a greater geographic range.
So, okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead, sir.
Eight-point-three-four-point-oh-five-oh includes the, a greater expansion, so we have a regulation of smoking in enclosed public spaces, regulating smoking in enclosed and non-enclosed public spaces. And this includes at certain points, private and public golf courses, which we don't presently have public golf courses, sidewalks, doorways and windows within buildings, we have here an expansion no smoke within thirty-five feet, outdoor dining areas and restaurants, and outdoor work sites. So those are additions, and then the, the addition of when the place of employment, we're creating a definition of place of employment that's more inclusive, so that it's regional, not regionally, it's equally applied. And so those are the recommendations there for discussion, what the staff is seeking is direction from council on which of those, if any, they would like to have brought back as an ordinance for discussion and consideration.
I just know from my perspective, I spent a lot of time with these folks going around and looking at some of these environments. There were a number of them that I also thought should have been brought in, but I think that may be a discussion for another day from a planning perspective, because I've got a lot of folks, especially in some of the senior housing, saying that they, they have respiratory problems, and the guy sitting there smoking or toking on the balcony next door, so that they're, we may need at some point to look at non-smoking sections or part, within apartment complexes. This building you can smoke in, because we get, as you get older, people start getting respiratory problems, so. I, I know in the building before my mom passed away, it was a real problem with a lot of folks over there. So that's the only other one that I could think of, I think that we have narrowed it down and eliminated some of the most onerous areas of, that, that, or, or areas that were, had the potential for a lot of pushback, you know, out there. Anyways, that, that's the only thing that, that, and I don't, I don't want us to delay this process to look at that. I think we, that's a broader discussion we can have on what size building, and are they physically separated, or how we want to do that, so.
Mayor Hoffbauer, I, I could not agree with you more. Having separate buildings would be great. A lot of people like myself are on certain medications where you get very, very sensitive to certain things like cigarette smoke. So to, to have the ability to live in a place while you're ill and still take your meds and, and not be bombarded by the scent of cigarettes or marijuana or whatever else they might be smoking, clove cigarettes, whatever the case may be. Having separate buildings would be amazing.
I've tried to look at that and tried to be sensitive to both sides, but I think at the end of the day, if it comes between you have to walk out in a parking lot where somebody's going to die, I'm going to, I'm going to pick, you need to take a walk out in a parking lot if you're a smoker, so.
Yeah.
Anyways, so let's take a look at that, but I don't want to delay this to bring that in, okay? Anybody else? Mr. Bishop, any thoughts?
Uh, no, I think all the areas we've, you know, identified in this staff report here are pretty good. Obviously the parks, Drytown, Playhouse, Library, I think all of those are mental areas we shouldn't be looking at.
And I just, and I just think we just need to find the, the tools for Mike's team to help them with the enforcement in some of these areas, so.
Yeah, okay. When they, when the committee talked to me, I saw signs putting signs up where it was a part of that.
Yeah, yeah, and this, this grant will help with that, so.
Yeah, exactly.
Do you have anything more?
Thank you.
You good with that? Mr. Loa, any, anything additional on that?
Well, I'm, I'm in agreement with everything that's being said tonight, but one of the things that we probably can't do anything about is that oftentimes you're traveling in your car, and someone is smoking marijuana or tobacco, and you can, you know, it's going all over the area. I don't, that's not part of this, and I don't know that we can do anything to control it, but it's a problem.
There, there are some laws, Mr. Loa, about smoking in your vehicle with children in the car. But yeah, I, I totally agree with you, I could be sitting at a stoplight and I could smell two car lengths ahead of me, whatever it is they're smoking, so. Yeah, I don't think we can do much about it.
Isn't it the same thing as a, isn't it, have same, basically like a open container, you guys? Yeah, so deputies are.
Oh, for the weed, yeah, if, if you can't drink a beer, you can't smoke a weed, you have to smoke a joint, so.
Well, it's certainly being disobeyed.
Yes, it is.
It's, it's, I think.
Makes me very unhappy.
I think there's more marijuana smoking in cars than there is beer drinking.
Probably.
As they're traveling around.
I, I think it's a big public service announcement that we need to get out, because I don't think people, people just, you know, it became legal and they thought they could just do it when and wherever they want, and that's, we need to get the messaging out, we need to be better storytellers saying what, what the rules are, we need to get some stuff on channel twenty-seven on some of the other stations and say what all, all the rules are, because people don't know, they, they haven't taken the time to educate themselves.
Clearly, they're not treating it like alcohol.
Okay, anything else, or City Attorney, do you have any, need any clarification, or I'm getting the idea that you've got pretty good consensus here on where we go for this, and we're anxious to see this get updated.
All right, so all I would say is that a little bit of time to write it, we have a, a pretty good draft already in place, and with noticing, we can, we'll be able to bring this back in February, the first meeting, the second.
Excellent, okay, that'd be great.
Thank you.
Much as necessary tonight.
All right, okay. You guys want to submit your reports?
Yes.
Okay, we can do that. Rhonda, do you have anything you will need to add right now? Because we're going to get shut off, everybody.
Uh, not specific to reports, except to mention that this season of service is coming this weekend for the MLK Day at Legacy Commons, and we encourage the public to reach out to Patstisia Morales if they have any questions or would like to be a part of it.
Excellent, so season of service over there, and if you want to get your shoes dirty, we're going to, the Desert Dumping Task Force is going to be cleaning up more crud out there, so.
Mayor, if I could, just at the beginning of the meeting, because we had redistricting starting, I rushed through my report out. If I could reread the first three, just to make sure.
Yes, sir.
Create an accurate record. So item four-point-one, Conference of Legal Counsel Anticipate Litigation, Council Was Provided An Update On This Matter Providing Unanimated Direction To Staff, as Item four-point-two and four-point-three, Council Gave Unanimated Direction To Staff. Thank you.
Right. Okay, anything else, or, so we can beat the internet here?
Give me just a minute.
New business?
Uh-huh?
Are we going to do new business, or are we going to wait on that?
No, if you got something timely, let's do it.
Well, I, I, no, my staff can wait, well, I made it.
Go ahead.
Okay, so really fast, I, I've been pushing for this for years through five different city managers, and it's become very personal to me. Um, I would like to get some, some information from staff. What do we have to do in Palmdale to get a decent cemetery? As you know, I'm dying and having to make funeral arrangements, um, it is difficult in Palmdale, because I, I would like us to have a quality cemetery for our residents. Between, you know, both cities, we've got over three hundred thousand people, and they're going down below into Valencia to bury their loved ones. And like I said, it's very personal to me right now, and also over the holidays, I went and visited my father who's, who's deceased, he was a Korean War vet, and he's at the Riverside National Cemetery, and it wouldn't hurt us to reach out to the feds to see if we can get a national cemetery out here. We're right up next to Edwards Air Force Base, and we've got a lot of veterans and veterans homes here. So if, if we could just kind of look into that to see what we can do to bring a regular cemetery or a military cemetery, I think our residents deserve to have that, that convenience here. Second thing, I would like to get an update on where we are with our surveillance cameras, there's been some crimes that happened over the holidays, and had we had a camera in place, it would have been a whole lot easier to, to solve, um.
I think that team is coming in, right? As we speak.
So, Councilwoman Bencourt, we actually have G four S, which is our consultant, they have been on-site all week this week doing the analysis of all of our city facilities as well as parking, as well as park and rides and various other sites throughout Palmdale to make the assessment. Now, they will need approximately ninety days to come back to us with some recommendations, and then we will go out to bid.
We can give them some recommendations tomorrow, okay?
I, I can give them some, and, and the other thing too, Rhonda, is, is there are places in the city that we do have cameras, and just like we tell the businesses, it's great to have a camera, but can you make sure that they work? Can you make sure that your lenses are clean, so that we can actually see the pictures? Um, so yeah, if we can just get an update on that. Also regarding this anti-smoking stuff, I would like to see what we can do, maybe with some Measure A V money? I don't know if it's available with Measure A V money, but what about people that really truly do want to stop smoking, whether it's cigarettes or weed? I wondered if we can put some kind of program together, maybe with Pueblo Days and Ludes, some, something that we can financially support or with mentorship, or what we can do as a city to help those people stop smoking. It's not easy, I mean, I've got a daughter who smokes, and she's probably tried, tried twenty times to quit. It's, it's such an addictive property, and, and you're all aware of that, I'm preaching to the choir, but maybe we can look into what we can do as a city to help people stop smoking?
You're absolutely right, it's extremely difficult, it's, it's tougher than stopping drinking.
It, it really is, it's, it's, especially if you're around people that smoke. And then my last thing is, if we, you know, for, for decades, I've been asking what it would take to get a quality domestic violence shelter here, and I don't want to call it a woman's shelter, because we know that men are abused too. So, we don't have a domestic violence shelter in the City of Palmdale. With COVID, people, people have been trapped in their homes, there's, there's been some statistics saying that there's been a rise throughout the nation of domestic violence. I would like for us to have a quality place for people to go in their time of need. So if we could just kind of get an update on, you know, what, what people are thinking, you know, on the council about that, or what staff thinks about that, that would be great, so.
You know, on that question.
Okay, I'm done.
Ms., Ms. Bencourt, on that, I think that there is an opportunity to start looking into that, because I believe that we're going to be working on a navigation center. Uh, maybe that's something that could be discussed along those lines, and I.
Yeah, that would be great, that would be great.
If staff can let us know if we're truly working on a navigation center to address the homelessness issues, I think that this could be accommodated. But anyway, I, I do support that, that idea.
Al-also, Laura, on your first, on your first item, yeah, about a year or so ago, we merged in or annexed in with the Antelope Valley Cemetery District.
Right, for the Palmdale Cemetery?
Well, no, 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 that's a separate deal. Uh, this is part of the, part of the cemetery district, and we have an appointee over there. So I would suggest that maybe the, have that discussion with Dave Owens and some of the people on the, on the board, because we brought that up in, in the past, and I know that they're interested in having a, a, a quality environment and experience for our families as well.
Yeah, because, because you know, like, all of us have to, I mean, we go visit, visit our relatives, we shouldn't have to keep driving out of town for hours to go visit our relatives who are buried somewhere else.
I'm heading back to Chicago, so I, I get that.
Yeah, so you, yeah, you understand.
I support, I support that, as well as the, uh, the, the shelter for abused persons. But I, I want to have the City Attorney and the Acting City Manager to bring us an update on what is happening with the prosecution of misdemeanors. There was an article, again, in the abandonment of responsibility by District Attorney Gascon regarding a, an assault that took place in two thousand fourteen, and through DNA, they were able to determine that an individual by the name of Tubbs was the perpetrator. This was an, this was an assault on a girl, and she was exiting one of the bathrooms at the Denny's here in Palmdale.
Oh, I remember that.
On Forty-seventh Street, correct?
Yeah, I remember that.
And so because this person happens to be, at the time of that offense, was less than eighteen years old, so he was treated as a juvenile. In Gascon, his policy is not to prosecute juveniles as adults, and since the case remained in the juvenile court, Tubbs will not have to register as a sex offender.
Wow.
And, so I think that Gascon continues to show his disregard for public safety. This is a, this is a tragic illustration of that policy that he is pursuing, and I want to know what we're doing as far as the prosecution of misdemeanors that he continues not to prosecute.
Didn't that go out to the, the outfit that, did the Santa Clarita Health Department survey?
It, it did, and we'll have an agreement back at the February second meeting.
Absolutely.
Okay, I just want to have an update on that.
Yeah, and, and, and I'm still, I, I hope that we're still moving forward with having our, our City Attorney to file some cases, and maybe we can reallocate some funds back into his budget, I know he's shorthanded right now, so maybe we can beef up our City Attorney's Office a little bit and give them more manpower and, or lady power, and, and maybe we can start doing some of our own filings, as, as we discussed previously.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to bring it up, because this was something that was in the media here recently, and we can't sit around waiting for these things to happen, we need to speed this up, and we need to take action.
I, I agree, absolutely.
We need to protect our public.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
I do have one item that I like to see if staff can start working on, and that is the Quimby Act. I looked at our ordinance, it addresses the Quimby Act, but it's just so anti. I looked at an ordinance that addresses the Quimby Act, but it's just so antiquated that I don't think that it actually can really work these days.
What's that?
The Quimby Act, the park development fees. At the beginning, we talked about park development fees and the, the way that they are created and generated. That they are supposed to stay used within the areas that they, they are collected. I don't think that we have a definition as to what that area is. For instance, development on any side of the city, park development fees could be used throughout the city. But I think that we need to start looking at what the Quimby Act is in our code and start looking at creating a policy where fees that are development fees, such as development park fees and drainage fees and those kind of things are used where they're supposed to be used, within the area that they belong to.
We've had, you talked about this before, and the problem was is that several years ago, down in LA, there was a huge lawsuit. I think it went up to state appeals court. And they said that city limits of the city of LA constitutes.
That's, again, that's why I like to get the attorney's office to start looking into it. Because again, fees generated on one side of the city within a district should remain within that district. Park development fees don't have a definition of where, what the district is. And again, I'm bringing this up again from the very beginning where fees are used from all the.
I think you have to be careful with that though, because there's some areas where it's pretty well-developed already. And, and then you end up not getting anything over there, because you don't have new development. So we got, it's a balancing act, but I, I, I think it's worthy of having the discussion.
The way that the money was distributed was a little lopsided, I agree with you on. And also, you know, Jason Zeig, early on, Jason Zeig had said that, you know, I had promised to bring down park fees over at the water park, you know. But I'm only one person and the cost of the water park, it's more and more expensive and we've gotta keep funding that. But it's true that the people that bought houses here, because I live practically across the street from the water park. You know, we have these bonds, we have certain things and we knew it was gonna go for the water park. But yet I really can't afford to go to the water park. So Juan, maybe you and I can sit down again and we can go over the numbers again and maybe come up with a more equitable solution coming, you know, moving forward.
So if, if you recall, we actually did drop the rate for.
No, we didn't.
For the Palmdale residents because of that very, very issue. But I, I, yeah, it, it can, it can be really costly, but the problem is with the.
But see, Mike, Mike's the one park you have to pay to go to. You guys all have three parks.
No, 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 you don't have to pay to go to the park. You have to pay to go to the amenity.
Just so we don't have a discussion, I'll take the direction.
Oh, sorry, 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 sorry.
No, I, I know, I know.
Okay, I'm sorry, I apologize.
You don't, you don't pay to go to the park, so you pay to go to the.
Water park.
The amenity, well, it's just like the, what do you call it, the Best of West.
You can't get in the water park without paying, I'm telling you right now.
You, you can't get in the Best of the West either without paying, so.
Okay.
So.
Sorry, city attorney, I apologize.
All right, anything else or, because this machine's gonna shut off in a second.
Just, just real quick, I wanted to touch base to see where we're at with some of the trash cleanup. I know the illegal dumping's been increasing after the holidays and I've had two residents reach out, notice that it was getting worse. I just wanted to see where we're at as far as signage, go, any possible things we could do to talk with waste management? I remember Mr. Creo had some ideas about having our current waste hauler help us pick up all the illegal dumping out there and, and just do what we can to help clean the city up, because.
Yeah, awesome. I got the same calls and I think this goes back to what I was saying about the city attorney's office needs to be better staffed. Because those are the kind of things that we can prosecute through, through our city if we have the manpower to do it. I know that the county has a illegal dumping task force for the county areas. And maybe we can get some funding to have some within the city jurisdiction.
We're, we're part of, we're part of that.
We can talk about that maybe later at, at another date with the sheriffs.
We're a part of that. I've been to the meeting.
Well, I see the reports when they come in and they're always county area.
Yeah, they, that's where they focus it, so.
Right.
Yeah, we, we.
Right, but, but maybe we can give them.
If they, if they tell us what they are, we go.
Right, but it would be nice to have a, a, a local task force within just the city limits. But we, we're off topic, I know, I understand that, but maybe we can bring that up at another date, maybe we can have a workshop on it.
Yeah, or some kind of recording of all the things that we can do and then.
Yeah.
And that's, that's a good, a workshop specifically rather than just an item, because staff has been working incredibly hard on a multi-department reaching out to partners in the community and they developed and devised a plan that's inclusive of just about every department.
Right.
To put a stake in it.
Awesome.
Okay, all right.
Happy holidays, everybody. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Excellent, okay, we'll go ahead and adjourn. Thank you.